So, um, at the bottom, there's like a, at the bottom, there's a green button that says share screen.
Right, which I hit.
And then what does it say?
Select a window.
So you can...
We can, we can do that. We can get you one, for sure.
Yeah, I also like, don't have to give them your name.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, at the bottom, there's like a, at the bottom, there's a green button that says Share Screen.
Right, which I hit.
And then what does it say?
Select a window.
So you can...
To get over to, uh, the minute I call the meeting to order, we're gonna have, but something's gonna happen, I think. We have to have the approval of the agenda, and, no, so the flag salute first. Um, flag salute, and go to call on Hutch Castropel. Okay, thank you so much, thank you, Josh. Oh, Josh, you know what else I like? Well, if I, I can go up here, if I wanna find a, an attachment, I can go up here and come in with the attachment. Are we about to start, everybody? I like everybody. Okay. What did you say, man? Okay, okay, okay. Are we ready? Are we ready? Are we ready for the countdown back there, guys?
I'm running everyone into the...
How much? Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District's meeting, board meeting. It's October 26th, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I would like, at this point, if I could ask our young man named Hutch Castropel to lead us in the flag salute. Hutch, are you out there?
Ayes.
Okay, strong student voice.
Strong voice.
So, put your right hand over here.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, and who rules every day and just as well.
Thank you, Hutch, that was very nice, thank you. Okay, uh, moving right along, Mary?
I'd like to move for the approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Minus thirteen B.
Okay. Any discussion, uh, second to the motion, so second it, thank you. Ms. Margot, did you second it?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, what the reason for pulling thirteen B is tonight?
Do you wanna have discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, my motion to approve the agenda minus fifteen...
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Huh?
Thirteen B.
Oh, thirteen B, uh, any discussion, questions, comments?
I have discussion.
Okay, Ms. Wells?
Well, I'd like to, uh, remove this contract for Team Concept Development Services from the agenda for this evening, uh, for the following reasons. My understanding is that this contract is not, uh, the current existing contract does not expire for nine months, and so I don't see that there's an urgency to approve this contract this evening. Uh, we did not discuss or review either the existing contract or this new contract as a board, and it appeared on the agenda Friday evening. And I don't feel that that's giving the proper amount of consideration that is necessary to renew another five-year contract. Secondly, it's a, this is a complicated contract, and it, the scope of work that we have ahead of us for the next five years is not clearly defined for us as a district, and especially given that we just last Thursday had an update and revised budget and master plan schedule, as well as the revised Construction and Facilities Policy Manual, that we have not had time to review any of these items, really, as a board, as well. I think before that, these items should be going to our Facilities and Construction Committee, our Advisory Committee, that we as a board set up to support the board on these matters. As well, it should go to our Finance Committee to review these items as well, before it comes to the board for approval. I feel that it's really important for us, these, these programs are so important for us as a district, and the direction that we go, um, should be aligned with what our vision and goals are for the board, and for, that the board has for the district. And it really requires for us to have careful consideration and review before we approve these, these documents. And specifically, I'm speaking right now about the contract. And I don't see that there's an urgency for this. And I just also would say we're going to have a fifth board member that will be joining the board in the next few months, and I think it would be important to include that fifth board member in this process. I also think that the community should have time to be able to review and to provide comment, and so that we are really following the process of a board, doing what we really are here to do, which is to set the direction and the policies and the procedures as a board. And this contract is one of the, includes one of these things that needs to be included in this contract. We can't make a contract if we don't have that clear direction. Uh, and set a contract first for the next five years, especially when we don't have an urgency to do this today.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, comments?
Yeah, I, um, I would have to respectfully disagree. I think it's only a thirty-five-page contract that I was able to review along with the rest of the agenda. There were plenty of, uh, lengthy documents attached to this agenda, and I, I don't think that this needs to be pulled, um, at this time. And it is, it is not our committee's purview to review every contract that comes in front of the board. Um, if, if we did, everything is financial. That means we would be giving every contract to the Finance Committee to review. That's not a practice we have or support. And the Construction Committee, um, was not formed to review contracts on our behalf either. That's our job, we're the ones who take the vote on these things. So it's up to us to actually do our due diligence, research, ask the questions, and make the decision.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I have further...
I need to make, uh, I, 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 when I got this, I'm, I'm in agreement with, um, Mrs. Wells, not about with the committees so much, but as to the fact that there's, does not, in my opinion, seem to be such an urgency to doing it tonight, given the fact that, uh, I, when I went through the contract and actually tried to compare the 2017 contract to the nights, the contract we're beginning tonight, and there's several items that are different in the new contract, and I needed to be able to understand how we are affected, or how they, how they will be, affect us as a board. So I really wanted to have more time to go over that a little more clearly. I don't think it's urgent right now that, um, that we have to approve this, this, this evening. So I'm going to have to agree with Mrs. Wells on that item. Uh, if there's any other comment, Mr. Raymer? Mrs., Dr. Stern, no, okay. Okay, no more comment?
I have some more comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the other thing that I would say is, this is a contract where Don Blake is with, a contract for, with Don Blake's company, Team Concept Development Services, is with the board. This is not like other contracts that we have that are finance contracts. So this is, this is on the board, and it's a different type of contract. And given that we just received the budget schedule revision from, from 2018, and we haven't really had a chance to digest that, and we haven't really had a chance, uh, the committees have not had a chance to review that and give us their opinions, which is why the Finance Committee and the Facilities and Construction Committee exist. It just seems premature to be signing a five-year contract in advance of that, when we don't really have a clear, clear, uh, review and recommendations about what the next five years looks like for us. And so I think it's premature to sign a contract in advance. Further, we haven't reviewed what has transpired in the last five years. So this just, you know, other contracts, when we receive them, we, many times, we have discussion, or we have review. This contract just came to us as a new contract to sign. No discussion about what worked or didn't work in the last contract, why we're making changes to the new contract. And it's really, it's rushing, and there is no reason to rush. We don't have a deadline, and I don't see that that, uh, there's any reason for us to not take the time, uh, give it the time and consideration that it deserves, our, you know, we deserve to do that for our constituents. We deserve to do that so that we're clearer on where our program is going. And the other thing I want to say really clearly is this is not a trust issue. This is not a trust issue in our Bond Manager, our Team Concepts Development Services. This is about process and giving the true, uh, due diligence that we as a board have been elected to be on this board for, which is to review and to carefully consider what contracts we're going into and why. And it should be based on what our future direction is for the next five years. Like this, uh, schedule and budget, the master plan schedule and budget, this has not been revised since 2018. The policies and procedures, Daniel...
Excuse me, the, the topic is, but that's...
I'm sorry, what I'm saying is to commit to five years, when we haven't committed to five years or three years for, for these items, which in this manu, this policy and procedures manual, to do the contract first, just seems out of order as well.
Thank you, okay, uh, no more discussion, I'll call for the...
Can I just say, Mrs. Mark, because I just wanna, because I'm sure it might be confusing to some people that, um, you know, this, this would be standard procedure as far as the administration, when we see contracts like this, to, um, to then put them on the agenda. Certainly, it is the board's purview to then pull these items for further discussion, but, um, you know, these types of contracts, this is, this is our standard procedure to be able to put this information in front of the board and in front of the community. Um, we have not had, um, any direction at all to, to send this information to any of our committees, to, you know, to anybody else to look at, it's directly to the Board of Education. So I just want people to understand, this is our standard procedure to be able to present these contracts to you.
Thank you. Okay, call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes. We are vote, it's voting that the agenda will be...
The agenda will be forward without the item of that, was thirteen, what was the number again? I think it was thirteen C.
Thirteen B.
Thirteen B, thirteen B?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Stern?
Um, I can agree to approve it without, at this time.
I can agree to approve it without, at this time. So I would say, yes, am I doing that correctly? Yes, I agree to go forward without thirteen B tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, so the motion passes three to one, with the provisional number being four to one. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, Dr. Breggy, was there, no, we're not there yet. Yeah, we are. Okay. Report of any closed action today in the closed session.
Present, Marcus, there was no action in closed session.
Okay, now we are going to move to our teacher spotlight, and we have a wonderful presentation coming.
We do, and I'd like to start off by introducing Ms. Saber, Ms. Sarah Gaber, principal at Hawthorne Elementary. She will introduce our teacher spotlight.
Good evening, Mrs. Marcus and Board of Education. Dr. Breggy, thank you so much for inviting us. We'd love to use this opportunity to spotlight small things that are happening around our school. It's my pleasure to welcome Leat Keynes, who is a special education teacher at Hawthorne. This is her second year at Hawthorne and her fourth year teaching. She came out of Teach for America and joined Beverly Hills Unified. In our Zoom year, we interviewed her on Zoom, and she had an incredible year last year, all virtual, and an incredible year this year with her students. She has a special day class for third to fifth graders. And she's with, one of our students, Liv Saya. And Liv is actually going to start tonight before Ms. Keynes talks.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me.
Can you talk a little louder, Leat? Can you even get a little closer to the mic so I can hear you better? Can you come a little closer to the mic?
So here's what I'm going to say. Hi, my name is Liv Saya. I am a fifth grader in Ms. Keynes and Ms. Gers' class at Hawthorne. It is a pleasure to talk to you all tonight. We saw a piece of land outside Ms. Keynes' class, and we wanted to make it a place where people felt happy. To start, we measured the surface. Then we made posters to invite all the fifth graders to help play in our herb garden. Next, we planned out what we wanted it to look like and what we wanted to plant. We, we have moved all the soil into the planters, then the plants. I work lots of fifth graders, and I help pot the plants. We planted parsley, dill, thyme, mint, and jalapenos. We researched how much water each plant needs and created a watering chart. It is my job to water the parsley and dill twice a week. When the herbs are ready, we will make pickles with the dill salad and lots of other healthy foods. The herb garden is important to me because it is a little part of the school that the fifth graders helped to make. When we go to middle school, we'll always remember how we made Hawthorne a little bit more beautiful. I want to thank you all for giving me the pleasure to talk to you all. Come and visit the herb garden. Have a great night.
Thank you, thank you. You must be so proud of her.
Liv, that was amazing.
Yeah.
Can I share my screen? Is that okay? So to start off of entering, anyone is wondering why we keep calling it a herb garden instead of a herb garden. We can blame my South African parents for that one, so, just to preface. As you can see, this project was initiated, built, and led by the students. This project-based learning activity incorporated skills from across the curriculum, and it allowed students to acquire deeper knowledge through real-world experiences and challenges. From the basics of using a ruler to measure an area, on how to dig with a shovel, because we did have some questions on how to use a shovel, to properly planting a seedling and taking care of a living organism. This project created an opportunity for students from different classes to work together, and it also gave them a sense of responsibility. Once we created the garden, we brainstormed ideas for our garden club that will hopefully be happening once a month. This was a student-led discussion, and all these ideas came from the students. Some of them were selling herbs to donate money, creating our own gardening book, decorating the garden, learning how to prune the plants. Our next step in our garden will be creating a background mural to the garden. The students researched different types of murals. They then created these images that we're going to design and put together to create one cohesive art project. And the students will then help paint and plan the mural. Personally, after spending my first year in Beverly Hills on Zoom, it was such a great opportunity to get to know the students from my class and from the rest of the fifth graders and connect with them and make a difference in such a meaningful way. We're greatly appreciative to the Hawthorne PTA for funding this project. We couldn't have done it without them. And it's just been amazing to see the students' visions come to life and their continued passion for this project. Thank you for letting us share tonight.
Well, maybe some of the members of the board would like to make a few comments. We could start tonight. We're starting with Dr. Stern.
Well, congratulations. I think it's a wonderful and inspirational project. I think that the more time we spend outside and looking at nature to teach us certain things, whether it's the discipline of science or speech and dialogue or art, I think that it's really very valuable. And I'm glad you guys took the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
Thank you, and please save me a pickle.
I agree with Dr. Stern. I think it's so wonderful to see that you are utilizing those projects, project-based learning to discover and learn in some of the best of ways, so thank you.
And I'd just like to say that from the standpoint of pride, of seeing something that you take and you grow and that you can then enjoy either in a salad or in a vegetable or whatever, you have no idea what pride that gives the kids for them to have grown something and have been, and then also the teamwork that goes with it, the cooperation and all this building of togetherness. And it just, it's amazing what it does for the students' feelings for themselves. So I love this project, and I think that, I hope that it can continue. I see how you've made a space to grow it by having outdoor boxes. You didn't have to find a plot of land. You found an empty space. And I think that's what's so wonderful, and I couldn't be happier that the PTA was able to provide those things for you because that's what made this possible. So I want to, hope you keep up with this project. Tell the kids I think it's wonderful, and I'm going to come and visit and see some of the products that they're growing. So thank you again for coming this evening. We really appreciate it. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. We're starting again. Go ahead, Mr. Raymer. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I absolutely love this project. I mean, student-initiated projects are becoming more and more prevalent throughout the state, whether it be at school, local, and even state and national level. So it's amazing that you are starting early because those are skills that will stay with you and help you for a long time. And they're also just very important things to have the student input on things that they find important. So this is the thing that you thought would be better for your school, better for your classmates, and that's an amazing thing that you have done. So keep it up, and I hope to come visit with Mrs. Marcus sometime.
We could go buy some of their vegetables.
So there's, there's a whole rose garden. That has a whole bunch of other parts and edible garden that we also use school-wide. All of the classes get an opportunity to plant. But this was a little piece of land that Ms. Keynes' class noticed out of her back window. It also happens to share space with our testing area. So anyone who wants to come by and get a COVID test, it's sort of in that same little area. So she said they're really beautifying the school in a way that was untapped in a resource. Thank you to Ms. Keynes for being here. Thank you to Liv for coming on also.
Yeah, very familiar with the areas and with the growing areas, having been there. So I think I did it once when I was teaching the science program for the little kids. Okay, thank you again. All right, we are now going to move on to the agenda hearing period. I have three speakers tonight, and I will call on Lea Yadegar.
Hi, yes, this is Lea Yadegar. Thank you guys so much for everything that you do. I wanted to make a public comment, my first public comment. Coming back to the district, I went K through twelve through the district. I'm now a new mom of a Hawthorne student. And my husband and I are attorneys and moved back. We have three sons under six who will hopefully be joining my eldest son at Hawthorne. And I know since we're now talking about something different, this is a little bit out of the way. But I wanted to make a public comment to talk about the importance of diversity on our board and how excited we are to have an interim position open and how excited parents are at both Hawthorne and Horace Mann to get someone new with wonderful ideas and a diverse background. As many of you know, more than fifty percent of Hawthorne and our students in our schools are of Iranian descent. And I hope, as someone of Iranian descent myself, that we are able to get at least one person on the board that shares that background and that represents the student and parent populations of our school. I so look forward to meeting you all in person, and we are excited for all the wonderful things that you're going to continue to do. And I'd also like to give the rest of my time to a fellow Hawthorne parent, Nikki Shamsi. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Rivka Walchun. I call on Rivka Walchun.
Hello, everybody. I've put a letter into the minutes, and it goes as follows. I'm just going to read it. To Dr. Breggy, Mrs. Marcus, Mr. Margot, Ms. Wells, Dr. Stern of the Beverly Hills Unified School District, please govern yourselves accordingly as you are notice. It seems that many ethical and legal boundaries are being crossed with regard to what you are mandating without producing any documentation to validate such mandates. You have a fiduciary responsibility when you were sworn into office to provide a safe educational facility where students can thrive and their safety, mental, and physical well-being are protected. Are you aware that receiving uninformed consent by harassing, coercing, or bullying parents and students to weekly COVID-19 testing by holding in-person school hostage violates the Nuremberg Code? When faculty and staff ask for vaccine status, this violates HIPAA. It is discriminatory to favor one student above another. Modified quarantine by placing a yellow or another colored bracelet on the wrist of healthy students and isolating them from their friends in the classrooms, at recess, or in the cafeteria is unlawful, unconstitutional, constitutional, and violates human rights and borders on child abuse, child endangerment, and discrimination. The yellow bracelet has since been replaced by other colors once staff were confronted by parents of the connection to the Holocaust. The staff members in charge reportedly stated that they did not know about the Holocaust and the resulting Nuremberg Code. Some teachers in your schools are refusing to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with their class because they say this is offensive to them. It behooves you all to know the law, which commands that you are burdened with a duty of care with obligation to produce the facts, signs, and evidence relied upon as consideration for any emergency measure you put in place. You are willfully engaging in harming children with the systematic ongoing course of conduct with intent to defraud the people of the State of California and Los Angeles County of the intangible right to receive honest services by depriving students and their parents of this district of the constitutional form of government by false and fraudulent pretenses, representations, and deliberate misrepresentations with acts of coercion to give the illusion that one has no choice but to comply and perform. And this constitutes an involuntary servitude. I respectfully implore you to answer all the concerns mailed or emailed to you by myself and concerned parents of the Beverly Hills Unified School District within ten days of this notice and not ignore them. Shall you fail to answer these concerns, please be aware that making these mandates or declarations enforced not by the rule of law but by bullying are all in violation of your oath of office. And you are hereby requested to step down from your position immediately. Otherwise, litigation will follow. Mary Ann Rivka Walchun, spokesperson for at least two hundred families in the Beverly Hills Unified School District. Please take this notice very seriously. We have all been ignored. You're enforcing laws that are unlawful and illegal.
So, excuse me, Mrs. Walchun, your three minutes have expired. I'm sorry, I have to call unless you're at the very end. I. Okay, thank you. Okay. Last, I have Marie Neiman. Marie Neiman, I see you're there.
Good evening, thank you. I'm going to keep it very brief, so if anyone else needs my time, they can have the balance. As you know, I provided to you a petition signed by a hundred and twenty-two signers as of three thirty. When I sent it to you, it's up to a hundred and thirty-one signers. Now, it was a petition, Parents United for Choice. I made it part of the record. It is about our choice to make medical decisions for our children. And everything that's being imposed on them are medical decisions that need to be made by the parents via informed consent. I implore you to read it, consider it, and understand that there are many, many, many parents who are very upset with the direction that the school is going with these decisions and the bullying that's happening to enforce it. So that's all I'm going to say, and I give the rest of my time to whoever else needs it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. At the end of the public comment. I will move now to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the, we have nothing that's being pulled, Mr. Margot?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Who's the second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Wells. To approve the consent calendar, any, we will move on. I call for, if there's no comments, call for the question. I'll start with Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. The pass is five and oh with a six and oh provisional vote. Okay. Well, Dr. Breggy, we're ready for your report, I believe.
Thank you for this opportunity to provide you with another report on our school district. We have completed our first week of testing, the testing requirement for our students. And if you just step back and remember, one of our goals, our most important goal was to keep our students safe, keep our staff safe, and to keep our schools open. And that is what we're trying to do with our weekly testing, keeping kids and staff inside our classrooms and open out. The testing that we are doing is less invasive as it used to be as the pandemic has continued. We. Have really decent data? In our district, we could have made it. To just get lucky and to hopefully keep cases down, to keep our schools open. Or we could have been intentional about what we were doing to keep our goal of keeping our schools open. And we've asked ourselves this question over and over and over. And, you know, knowing that this is a big change in our community, the question every single day has been, does this testing allow us to be safer than we were before? And the answer to that as of right now is that yes, it is. We, on our dashboard, we have about seven active cases in our school district, which is a good sign. We certainly can improve in this area. But having seven active cases is enough information for us to continue our program. The testing program is not forever. It is an opportunity for us to continue to look at our data. And as our data improves, we are fortunate to be able to make the decisions that we need to make as far as what the testing looks like and how we move forward with our testing. There are great opportunities for, if our data improves, that the testing program is paused. paused, but putting it into motion also could be important for us if there is a need to ever bring that testing program back. It would be easy to have up and running again if and when the data ever presents itself. So a couple of wonderful things that I know that Eli will touch on too, so I'll just go through pretty quickly, but I do want to talk about just culture. It's been a really tough, almost two years, and you've heard it over and over again, but I have to tell you, it is such a wonderful feeling to see some culture in our schools and to see the active involvement of our students and to have a record number of students attend Homecoming Week is pretty amazing with close to 600 students that have participated. And the Norman Connection, which is the video announcements that are played in schools, is just another new way of being able to communicate with our students. And so we're starting to see this over and over at our campuses where our students are rallying around each other and they are pushing these programs and they're promoting these programs so that our students can be together for opportunities like this. And this was just a very successful sign of an improving culture. Another good sign, our 85% of our juniors took the PSAT and M, SQT, and then 92% of the freshmen took the PSAT. And why is this important and why do we celebrate this? It is really important for our students to become familiar with these tests and these test questions. Of course, it's not an exact replica, but there is no other better practice or better way to see where your strength areas are or what prep work you might need than to participate in these exams in our schools. These results that you get are also very helpful and to help guide you for what your next step is for any type of prep work. Congratulations to our girls volleyball team. They were the Ocean League champions and they went into their first game of the playoffs and did not win that game, but this was a huge victory for our students and we are very proud of the work that they've done and the accomplishment of winning the Ocean League championship. I had an opportunity to go to the Hawthorne Fall Harvest Festival, something that I've been able to go to every year, and I really appreciate the way that our PTA and our administration worked to put together COVID protocols so that this was, the events and the areas and activities you can see in these pictures were really spaced out nicely so that we did not have large groups of people in any one area. There was plenty of room to spread out and it was wonderful to see how many people attended the event. Some other pictures, some things happening at Hawthorne. And a great event that, again, every year at Horace Mann is multicultural festival. And this was on October 16th, it was on a Sunday, and I've never seen an event that has had this high of attendance. It was the entire community came out. Every board member was there and it felt like every community member was there. It was just fantastic. The energy was palpable and contagious and it was just great to see all of the cultures and traditions and diversity in our community all come together and be able to share food and dance and song, and it was just, just a really wonderful event. And I had the chance to visit Horace Mann Elementary, so I was able to go into some classrooms and here are a couple of pictures of some students down here at Horace Mann. And I'd like to move on to, October is National Principals Month. And so we're very fortunate in our school district to have very strong leadership at our schools. The stress of the pandemic, as you can only imagine, has educators up and down depending on the day, and there's lots of conflicts and there's lots of rules that are changing. As you know, as parents, you have been subjected to health protocols that sometimes change on a daily basis, and our principals are on the front line and they are put in conflict situations all the time. They are, it's all about relationships when you are working with our principals and our frontline, and they are really being pulled in 100 directions. And so we celebrate our four principals this month and like to start with Mr. Mead as the principal, Beverly Hills High School. And just some facts about him, being in our school district for 16 years gives him a very unique perspective, being a teacher and also an administrator. He's been principal for five years. It's a fun fact about Mr. Mead that I did not know, but he is a Lego kind of guy and he likes to do that on his time off. And you can see as principal that he has privilege to work with so many portions of our incredible community. And so, and I really like, and this is truly Mr. Mead, if you know him, is that he is giving back to the programs that he has given so much to, even when he started as a teacher. And then Beverly Vista Middle School and Dr. Skon, our first year, but first year in the district principal, who has hit the ground running. I like her fun fact because she has related to how important it was and really that moment when she wanted and she knew that she was going to be a teacher in a math class, you can see that. And I really like the why she serves, which is advocating for her students, providing support to her students, and supporting her staff as well. And Ms. Kaber, who has also had a very experienced list of opportunities in our school district as a teacher, 20 years in our school district, four years as principal. You can see that she enjoys Arizona and hiking and I really like, part of our strategic plan is about focusing on growth over time and I like that she has included that in her why she serves as principal, and also just getting to know students as people and as And Mr. Bugby at Horace Mann Elementary School, who has been in our district for four years, principal as three. And so also I like the, how he has linked when he was a former student to becoming a teacher himself and then a principal, some of the struggles he has had as a learner and how that has helped him as a leader in our school district. Also, meeting kids and their individual needs as well as the larger group of students and also the community involvement as a whole. We would like to thank all of our principals, which you're going to see in just a minute. You will have a chance to see them, celebrate them, but I have one last thing about testing that I want to come back to, and that is, the testing program, as I mentioned earlier before, is different than it was a year ago, even six months ago. And so this is just a short demonstration to show how quick this is for our students and how our students, whether you're at the elementary level where there's some flexibility, people are moving in and out of classrooms to be able to take the test, or at the secondary level, which is very much like when you pick up a schedule or you pick up a textbook or you pick up your yearbook and you are, you know, in an alphabetical line. It moves very quickly and the staff there is very supportive and very helpful, but I think most importantly, as you see in just a second, is that doing it yourself gives you that opportunity to take control of your own test and it really, as you can see in just a minute, just takes just seconds.
So, Dr. Breggy, if you stop sharing, when sir
Oh, okay.
Just so we don't get the feedback.
Great.
This week, I stopped by BVMS for my weekly COVID testing. I checked in with Mr. Stern and told him my name. Mr. Stern saw that I was listed for testing this week and directed me to the medical line for me. Since my last name is Breggy, I was in the A through E line. The testing company then checked their records to ensure that I was registered for the nasal test, and since I am, they checked my name, my date of birth, and found my label and attached to the vial. The medical assistant gave me the vial and directed me to the other medical assistant for the nasal swab test. I slowed this part of the video down to be in real time so you can see how quick and easy it really is. She opened the kit for me and I took the swab, placed the fuzzy part of the swab into my nose, five circles in my lower right nostril, five in the left, and I put the swab into the vial upside down. All done.
So our principals, if you were able to see this in their newsletters to their families, they were able to provide a more in-depth kind of instruction for students to be able to see what it is like to go through that experience, and they kind of methodically went through and kind of demonstrated what it looks like to have that done. This is just another testimonial, just from my perspective, to show you how quickly it actually is and how helpful the staff is as well. So I hope that you were able to just gain another perspective. We do ask that you reach out to your children and we ask that you share that type of feedback. We're really getting a lot of great feedback about how quickly this is moving. We have plenty of staff to assist and to help, but I wanted to show you kind of a firsthand experience of what it really is like to go through the testing. And I'd like to just end with, and allow the board to make any comments that they would like to, but I did ask for our principals to be part of the Zoom meeting because it has truly been a difficult, really going on two years. And I've had the opportunity, just the good fortune of our cabinet to work with our four principals who have been instrumental in helping us at the district office and supporting us at the district office in every initiative that we have had. We are asking a lot of a lot of people, but we are asking an incredible lift from our leadership, our principal at our schools. And so I celebrate all of you and thank you very much for your strong leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy, for a very, in fact, uplifting report. I enjoyed seeing you in fast motion going over to the testing and I think that it's, it was a little humorous, but also I think it helps to normalize the process a little bit, that, you know, we all, one thing that unites all of us, even we're at, you know, when we feel divisive is that we all are in fact humans and that we all are subject to some of the same things that we're experiencing at this time. And I thank you for being, starring as a cameo role in that, in that film. Also very happy to see the wide range of activities that are going on. I know we're having a lot of success with the sports. Dr. Ellis, thank you for all that and everything that's going on at BVMS, I think is amazing. I love that, all the way from sports, we also have some of the creative things going on with the multicultural fair as well as the Harvest Festival. And in my book, that's an amazing range of activities and experience for every kind of child that we come across in our district. So thank you and thank you to all of Beverly Hills Unified.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you. I don't know when it became so acceptable to be caught on camera with things up our noses, but that seems to be where the world is now. Thank you to the administration. You guys are just doing an amazing job guiding us through this, and I know from the daily grind of my years in the classroom, how hard this is. I know how much you really want to be focused on education and not be healthcare officials. Hawthorne Carnival was great. Mrs. Marcus, I did actually wind up winning that other basket, so I'm very excited.
We both won one.
Coffee all around. Yes, we both won a basket. It was, it was fun. And it was really refreshing over the last two weekends to see communities and events happening again on our school sites. I think we kind of maybe attended, hopefully we didn't take it for granted that we were able to do this, where, that we're lucky enough to live in a city where the weather permits us at this late point of the year to continue having activities as a community. A lot of places, we couldn't do that and, and we are very blessed in a lot of ways. And thank you to all of those PTA volunteers that put these events on. It was, you did way more of a mitzvah, I will say, than you know by getting people together again. So thank you to everyone.
Mrs. Wells?
Well, I would like to say thank you to admin as well, and I think it's really, truly a testament to all of your hard work in building community. We had, you know, last year, all during COVID, trying to keep a community together, but as witnessed in the last couple of weeks and going to these school events, they've been so joyous and they've been so filled with that sense of community. And each of the school, school sites had a different feel around that community event, but what was the same was this joyful feeling of being together and having that, that community experience. And I also would like to thank Dr. Breggy and his cabinet because we wouldn't be able to have those joyful outdoor events that are building our community if we were not able to keep everybody safe and able to go to school. So it takes a team effort and we've been very successful so far and I hope that we can continue to have these really wonderful events because this is what everybody really missed last year and it's going to be very healing for everybody.
Mr. Raymer, I would be remiss if I didn't ask you for a comment before I call on you for your comments.
So I thank you for your report, Dr. Breggy. As I was talking with him beforehand, I was actually tested last week and I can attribute my level of comfort, my efficiency to it directly to Mr. Mead's video demonstrating the process in its entirety. It was very easy. I went down with my whole class and I grabbed it, went in about 30 seconds and immediately got right back to class. Thank you to our principals. I do want to say, apologize to Mr. Mead for pulling you away from your family on your birthday and wish you a happy birthday as well. And yeah, I have a question for Dr. Breggy, but if they're heading out, I don't want to keep them before I, while I ask.
Okay, thank you. Well, I don't know how anybody cannot but feel good when you see a report like that. It really makes you feel good. The camaraderie, the feeling of the community, it just makes you want to just shout out to the world. I also want to give a shout out though to the people that make all those events possible because without them, it wouldn't be done. And the PTA and the volunteers that put those events together, you just need to know that we are so grateful because it brings the community together and it's really wonderful. I have a little bit of, a little bit of thing that I'd like to say. It's Principal Month, it's the end of the month. Why didn't we do this sooner? Maybe because all of a sudden, this whole month was Principal Month and I didn't know it. And one other thing, maybe someday we can talk about our assistant principals also and maybe make some time for people to see, just as a thought because
There is, there is an Assistant Principal Month, so
Okay, well, I didn't know
We will wait for that. And I just wanted to, I wanted to see if they would earn it at the end of the month, so that's why I waited.
Well, that's a good point of view, but I think I would have rewarded them, you know, well, that's beside the point. Okay, well, thank you again for that report. It was very enlightening and I loved it. And now, Mr. Raymer, I'm sure you have some wonderful report for us.
I do, thank you. I also have one more question for Dr. Breggy. This is a little more focused in regards to the instrumental music program, given the change in the, I know, I didn't ask beforehand, so I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But what was it? We got an email the other night saying that they had changed guidelines and we were able to practice indoors, of course, if we followed the proper protocols. I was just curious if that weekly testing would be rolled into the current program or would, or we would have to then sign up for testing individually?
So really good question, Eli. I'm glad that you brought that up. We are doing everything that we can to ensure that students test once. We know that our students are involved not only in music but also in AYSO and like, so we really don't want to overtest students, but, so we would absolutely include that testing as our testing that we're doing for the weekly testing. So we're doing everything that we can to ensure that that is aligned and so that it's good for that week of instruction.
Perfect. So moving forward, those students who are in instrumental music will be, or those in band specifically, will be signed up automatically for that Wednesday testing slot?
Yes, so the, and I think Yes, so the, and I think what you might be referring to is that the, right now, the protocols for, for band and just, you know, wind instruments is to, even if you're a vaccinated student, so it's all students have to be, and of course, we know that will change over time, but right now, it's all students will be tested, vaccinated and unvaccinated. So, but we will incorporate that into our weekly testing for sure.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Let me get started. I've got some sound associated with today's report, so I hope I'll be able to figure that out with my computer, but we'll see. So yeah, allow me to get started. So we're going to start with the high school as we usually do. And we're kicking it off with the orchestra concert that took place, I believe, last week, which I had the pleasure to attend. I have a lot of friends in orchestra and it was great to see them show off the things that they've been working on. So I have two videos actually of them performing. They're each about 30 seconds. So let me make sure that the sound comes- Whoa, I didn't even do anything that time. Let me make sure-
It sounded better than that.
Yeah, most definitely. Let me make sure it works. Sorry for my shaky hands. And then I've got one more as well. Oh, maybe it's doing it again. Alrighty, and here's another. That first one was D S E R E from Mozart's Requiem. It was an arrangement for string orchestra. And this is an arrangement of, I believe, Vivaldi's Concerto for Two Trumpets. No, Haydn's Concerto. No, maybe, I forget. It's one of my favorites, though, so I hope you enjoy. So the group featured there is the chamber orchestra, which is our most advanced string group at the high school. So a big thank you to all the musicians that performed, including the concert orchestra who performed before, as well as Mr. Bradbury for putting it together. As Dr. Breggy had mentioned, we had our homecoming week this past week, which included a spirit week, a rally, and eventually the dance. So here are some, some great pictures from the dance. This was a fan favorite, was when the cheer team choreographed a routine for the football team to participate in. So the top two images are of that and the bottom is of the cheer team dancing to the fight song with the marching band playing behind them. The rally was held outside. Traditionally, it's been held in the swim gym, but we had such a great success doing it in the stands and on the field that I think that we will probably be doing that for the future as well because it is a fantastic way to bring the whole school together. I mean, it was really amazing to see all of the stands fully packed with all students. The special schedule really helped with that. Having the great shakeout the day before, having to alter the schedule helped a lot as well. So we appreciate the accommodations made to make this rally happen and we hope to do more of them in the future. Here are some more pictures. So we did some games with our nominees and our teachers. So our nominees for Homecoming Court. On the left, you can see red light, green light, and in the middle, tug of war. These were games loosely based off of the hit Netflix show Squid Game that has been all the rage these days. I'm a big fan myself. But so we, we covered some of those games. And then on the right, you can see the marching band performed Poker Face because the theme of Homecoming this year was Viva Las Vegas. Here are some more pictures. We also had a performance from our dance company. Not pictured, we had a performance from our Madrigals Choir, which was absolutely fantastic. But here is Dance Company in action. They also performed later that night along with the marching band. So Homecoming Dance. I don't have too, I have many pictures of myself. I don't have too many pictures of others, but I figured you have seen enough of me. So here are some of the other ones I got. Oh, also, the pictures of the Homecoming Rally and this Homecoming Dance are courtesy of Kate Cotlier, who is one of the members of the editorial team for Highlights and Watchtower. So she graciously donated these photos and wanted me to remind everyone to go and buy their yearbooks. But here you can see the Las Vegas theme to heart with some students playing blackjack. Those tables were full essentially the whole night. I didn't even get a chance to play, but it was fantastic to see everyone else having a great time. Oh, that's the last slide. I also wanted to say, like Dr. Breggy was saying, this was an extremely successful event. It was an absolute labor of love for all of those in ASB and especially Mr. Hengler. So a big thank you to him because he worked restlessly for the past month or so getting this ready, especially this last week. I believe he was there essentially all day Saturday, as well as Friday evening and at the rally. So he is very instrumental, along with the other students in ASB. We sold about 640 tickets and had about 620 students actually show up. It was a great way to get everyone together. I know everyone's been looking for that opportunity to get together, so we were very glad to be able to provide it. The only criticism I've heard from students so far is that it did not go long enough, which is somewhat out of our control because there is a city ordinance. So we would have gone longer if we could have. Moving on to BVMS. They had Pretty in Pink Friday, last Friday, because it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and I believe that was also Breast Cancer Awareness Day. So students were urged to wear pink to raise awareness for breast cancer, which you can see some students participating here and I've seen some students participating at the high school as well. I believe ASB is putting on a bake sale soon, so we should see that in the next couple of days. At BVMS this Wednesday, they're having a Halloween maze put on by their ASB and PTA. There are going to be some ASB members from the high school there as well who have been contracted as scarers for within the maze, which is an absolutely amazing job. I would love to attend if I could, but I have a prior engagement. But tomorrow, that is going on from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, so we hope to see as many students there as possible. There will also be an In-N-Out truck, so keep that in mind. Also, on Friday, October 29th, at BVMS, they will be having a costume contest. There are a couple of categories that you can compete in, which are scariest, funniest, most original, and best group. So that should be very exciting. I always loved doing the costume contests in middle school. This year at school, my friends and I are dressing up as each other. So that should be, that should be fun. We're going to wear clothes on Thursday and then switch at the end of the day Thursday and wear them Friday, so that'll be a lot of fun. And our service learning over at the middle school is promoting a Walk to End Alzheimer's, which is at the LA Zoo. Students will be given community service hours for attending and they have already raised over $1,000 for the cause, so please do attend if you can. Hawthorne News. So last week was Digital Citizenship Spirit Week. So students participated in each of these spirit days in regards to being a good digital citizen, which is something that we really had to embrace last year and of course, is an excellent thing to continue to embrace and teach about for the future. So this was last week. Here are some pictures of the first day, which was Monday, October 18th, which was Hat Day. Here are some students and teachers in their hats. Of course, as Dr. Breggy was saying, they had the Fall Harvest Festival, which we used to do at El Rodeo, so it's great to see traditions like this continuing on. And it's also great to see in general, more community engagement events. It's fantastic to get people from all the schools and the community together, especially after the year that we had. So here are some pictures from that. And at this Fall Harvest Festival, there was pumpkin decorating. So here are some highlights that I was sent. I love the shark. I think that's a very, it's very creative. All of them are fantastic, much better than anything I could probably do. But yeah, great to see. And then at Horace Mann. Of course, the multicultural festival, which I was able to attend. I had a lot of fun going. It was great to see everybody there and everyone having a great time. Mrs. Wells and I were able to go and view the multicultural museum that they'd set up in their library, which had many donations from families that had been set up absolutely amazingly that students throughout the weeks before had been able to visit and learn about different cultures. Art Class. So in Art Class, students are learning about Van Gogh and drawing sunflowers. And this also sparked many of the students to go and visit the immersive Van Gogh experience going on right now, where these very similar sunflowers are projected much larger. So it's fantastic to learn very interactively. I know that I always feel like I learn and understand the best when that happens. So I think being able to create the art that you're learning about is an amazing experience for our students. And similar to BV, Breast Cancer Awareness Friday was October 22nd. Horace Mann students were urged to wear pink in support as well. And as this happened at all school sites, I have some pictures from Horace Mann from the Great Shakeout, which occurred last Thursday, which is one of the largest, Dr. Breggy, is it nationwide? Statewide, statewide?
Statewide, yes.
Fantastic, yeah. The largest statewide earthquake drill, which I think is amazing, especially because of the place that we live. We are very earthquake prone. Not only were schools involved, but I know that our, our public transportation systems were involved and trains were halted at the specified time. So at Horace Mann, Mr. Bugby got on the PA system and announced the start of the drill to which students ducked and covered under their desks until it was signified that it was safe to move and then they evacuated outside. And in second grade, the second graders are taking great advantage of their iPads and using many applications that assist them in learning and in just their overall engagement in their classes. So thank you. Any comments or questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Again, a very wonderful presentation. Dr. Stern?
Thank you, Mr. Raymer. I have no questions, but I just want to thank you. That was very, I enjoyed that very much. Thank you.
Mr. Margot?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the comprehensiveness. I think I was at all of those events this week, so it was fantastic. And I forgot to put homecoming into my Hawthorne and Horace Mann events. That was wonderful as well. It was just, especially the first quarter was the best quarter of football I think we've played all year, so.
Mrs. Wells?
I just echo the sentiments that everybody has expressed. Thank you, Eli.
Thank you. I would like to again compliment you on the completeness and how much you covered in the report, Mr. Raymer. I would like to make one little comment. I didn't know about that music event at the high school and I would definitely have been there for that if it was possible. I don't know why I wasn't given notice of that. Did I miss something?
There was a little bit of a smaller presence of the, of the, a little smaller publication for that event, so we should see more in the future. The, I believe orchestra is already preparing their winter concert, so I'll definitely be sure to notify you of that and I'm sure that you will see it other places as well.
I look forward to the music programs. I always love them. I just have such a deep feeling in my heart for those music programs, having been a participant when I was going to school. So I love the music and I love to see the kids perform and what it gives to them. I'd like to take a little bit of a moment here. Unfortunately, there was another speaker who had asked to speak in the public comment. This might be a good place now. I understand that Nikki Shamshi asked to speak. So Nikki, if you are out there and would like to speak, please come in now. You'll have your three minutes, okay? Thank you.
Hello, thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I did get a couple of minutes from Mary and Lea Yadiqar. I may use those as well. Hello and thank you for providing me with a voice to speak at this critical junction for a more inclusive direction in our school district. Today, we are presented with an opportunity not only to culturally diversify our school leadership, but also provide a platform- upon which we can better represent an inclusive environment for constituents of all backgrounds. We have an obligation to select an individual who learns, lends diversity to the school board, not only in opinion, but also in race. We have an obligation to select an individual who has a relevant and extensive reach within the community, particularly the elementary and middle school generation of parents. We have an obligation to select an individual who has the experience and know-how to tackle the complicated issues we face, from construction to infrastructure, to the enhancement of our education, curriculum and offerings, and finally, to the management of the pandemic. Members of the school board, we have an obligation to change. In review of the list of potential candidates, it was disappointing to see that many who met such objective standards did not qualify for an interview, while others who did not were literally pushed through. One candidate who clearly stood out was Marvin Wynans, a beloved parent of African-American descent. Mr. Wynan has been co-president of Beverly Vista PTA, member of the Horace Mann Site Council, a BHUSD School Board candidate, a member of FFSD Committee. He realizes board policy, is active in the community and understands the beauty of difference of opinion, but values empathy and unity. Yet he did not pass through to the interview process. I will also address the elephant in the room. Over 50% of our students, students are children of Iranian-American descent. If we really want to stand by our oath to inclusivity, should we not have at least one board member that reflects its largest cultural constituency? If so, one exemplary candidate that stand out is Judy Manucherri, a product of the Beverly Hills School System and a mother of two BHUSD children who attend Hawthorne and Beverly Vista. Mrs. Manucherri is also a managing partner in a successful real estate legal firm and has extensive knowledge in commercial construction, real estate law, due diligence and finance. More importantly, like yourselves, she takes time from her busy schedule to help make our schools a better place. She is a member of DVMS PTA Executive Board and was elected to the School Site Council by the parent body at Hawthorne. She has, she also actively participates in the majority of PTA events. Beyond her incredible achievements, like Marvin, she is a kind-hearted, loving and woman of faith who is loved by other parents. Understandably, I am certain the past few months have left a bitter mark on all of us, particularly board members who have had to spend more time addressing issues not directly affecting the children or school policy. I understand that you would prefer to select or friend, a friend or ally who would feel, who you feel may align to your principles, but we need to set the bar higher than that. We need compassionate individuals who are in the trenches and hear and see what is happening in the schools on a daily basis. Individuals with a diverse way of thought who speak to parents at pickup gates and listen to their concerns. We simply don't have that now. I am not here to tell you to select, how to select the best candidate. I am here to shed light on the immense opportunity to expand our horizons. We desperately need new perspective and an individual who has experience on all levels. And the two I mentioned do just that. Thank you for your time. We are all paying close attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Get back to my, we have an Ed Services update, I believe. Mr. Seaman?
Hi, good evening, everyone. BHUSD community and the Board of Education. I did share with you, the board members, I did share with you in your email, a copy of the presentation, so that we can follow along. Or I also provided you with two copies. One- Or I also provided you with two copies, uh, one of the BVMS Pathways to Success and one of the BHHS. I'll be referencing these throughout the presentation as well. So I'll go ahead and get started. What I hope to do tonight is be able to highlight, uh, obviously our Pathways to Success program across the district. Uh, talk a little bit about the Gate program that's currently running, and you'll hear some of our uh, students out in the hallway as they're leaving their after-school program here at the high school. Uh, review some of the current tests, uh, status of the test scores data that I presented to you guys earlier this month, and just to follow up on how the success of the program is going. Uh, last but not least, talk about some funding and plans. That's a little bit of the boring piece, and then last but not least, we'll close it out with a comparative chart that I wanted to show. Um, I'm gonna start off this presentation with about five years ago, this administration was charged with the Board of Education, from the Board of Education, on how do we make ourselves more competitive with the private market. So talking about those private schools. And so what we did as a cabinet was we started to go out and literally, we even lied at some points and did parent view days at some of the private schools to be able to see what was offered, what was their facilities looked like, and what types of programs were they trying to sell for the incoming seventh grader or the incoming ninth grade students. Um, and through that process, we really started to collaborate and started to look at even some of our competitive high schools in the surrounding areas that were public, and that's really where we started to identify gaps that we wanted to be able to work on and build out. So that led to the Pathways to Success, and so ultimately, what is a a a pathway itself by definition for the state of California is a three-course sequence, meaning a student to get credit for a pathway has to have an intro, concentrator and a capstone. An intro course is exactly what a lot of us at the panel and soon to be on the panel, uh, dais will take in college is a vocab course. Uh, introductory into economics would lend you into understanding the basic concepts of the economic field. Going into the concentrator would get into maybe say an accounting course, where you're really starting to take the basic terms and apply, and then a capstone could be an intern or work-based learning experience uh type of course, more hands-on. Uh, also, the college and career readiness indicators. As you'll start to see, and we uh mentioned about a year ago, the state of California has adopted a college and career readiness indicator framework, which we're gonna now start to be held accountable for, meaning they're gonna start to look for students that have completed those three courses in sequence and be able to provide them credit as college or career ready. They'll start to, and it's actually prepared. So I say ready, it's actually prepared. Uh, so that'll be another data point that we will be up against in a good way, uh, a good challenge, uh, that we'll want to consider moving forward. The other piece is just kind of selecting the electives with a purpose. Longer the days where when we were in school, we joined an elective because our friends liked it. What our goal is here is really start to have that exploration as early as elementary school with some of our specialist teachers into middle school, so when they select their electives in the high school level, they're picking that with a purpose. Uh, that way we prevent some of that early damage to that high school transcript that we may have seen in previous years or that we may experienced ourselves as kids. And then just kind of a high overview of, we are gonna start this process, so this is why this presentation is very timely. Because we want to start looking at these pathways again as we're rebuilding these pathways for the next school year. We'll already start that elective selection process as early as December, so we'll be doing presentations for the middle and the high school students pretty uh around December. So let's just jump in. What I wanted to do real fast is as you kind of look at both documents that are in front of you, and for those that are at home, you can go to the bhusd.org Ed Services section and then the Pathways to Success tab on the right-hand side. I wanted to put the pathways together. A lot of times we talk in isolation. We talk middle school versus high school, and I wanted you guys to physically be able to see the 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 six-twelve pathway and the importance behind why we're asking for funding for electives or um other pathways. So obviously, we're gonna start off right away with the English piece, and one of the things that we need to highlight and applaud ourselves is the fact that when we are doing a a comparison to our private schools in the area, we are the only school that offers an honors program sixth through eighth grade in ELA, math, science and social studies. And I'm gonna repeat that. We're the only school in the area that offers that honors level program in sixth through eighth grade in the four content areas. And you can see those listed there. Not only within the ELA pathway, for those kids that really feel a strong draw to English, we also are offering creative writing as early as sixth, seventh and eighth grade for them to double up their English efforts um and have that exposure. You'll see in math too, another thing to kind of highlight a little bit is the fact that we've expanded the math program. Uh, through reconfiguration, three years ago, we extended, and when I mentioned about the honors math compared to our local schools, some of them have accesses early to algebra, but we're offering accelerated and honors in seventh grade to find those middle-of-the-road kids that maybe need to push up a little bit higher or aren't at that speed yet but are still exceeding those state standards, um, all the way to geometry even in the eighth grade level. And then you'll see those pathways bleed right into the high school, where you'll see the eighth grade year uh falls off right into that freshman year. Uh, the next one obviously is the science pathway, and one of the things that I do want to highlight um is the formatting is a little funny, and I apologize for that. I will clean that up before. Um, but I want to highlight the science fair. So something that we really are excited about through the pathway is being able to recruit more students for our secondary science fair. So those tuning in at home or those here, make sure that you submit your application before November fifteenth, uh, because the science fair is December eighth at four PM at BVMS. Uh, I'm gonna jump into the social studies and kind of fly through, but with social studies itself, one of the things that we definitely want to highlight is that new AP and honors pathway. We are providing our incoming freshmen with the first opportunity of being able to take an AP course as a freshman. Uh, AP Human Geography, and as you see through that pathway, we're offering four advanced placement courses for students. That's twelve possible college credits in social studies alone, without having to double up in social studies in their eleventh or twelfth grade school year. And again, highlighting another thing, some of you may be aware, but Marissa Long's Current Events course. You think, why Current Events? Current Events leads into our AP Human Geography course. They partner a lot, Marissa Long's class with Alice Rose's class. That Current Events preps them for the AP Human Geography course, so there is a rhyme and a reason behind that elective. And they just got a shout-out by CNN Top Five in the Morning, and so if you haven't seen the video, we'll reshare that out. Uh, World Language, another uh exciting piece behind this pathway, again from the six-twelve standpoint, is one, we now are offering middle school students the opportunity to get up to Spanish and French too by eighth grade year. Why is that important to us to consider? A lot of what we hear from our high school seniors, eleventh and twelfth graders, is I didn't have a lot of exposure to AP and then I got dumped into four or five of them all at once. And one of those is always that AP World Language course, and now this gives them the opportunity to take the AP World Language course earlier, which hope that we're able to build that program, keep the kids in the World Language pathway and have more sitting for the AP exam, so they don't have to make those decisions during their senior year, one AP over another. All right, the next three slides, I'm gonna click a little fast. We do offer a very wide range of visual and performing arts. And I hope through seeing them within the slide, you're gonna be able to compare and see why are we offering a drama one-two, uh, a drama one and two in the middle school, because where does it directly lead? It leads into CAS's program. So we're creating these feeder systems like we doing, like we're doing with the middle school athletics program to feed into. So our photography program at the middle school dumps right into Mr. Briggs's photography class at the high school, which I want to highlight is a dual enrollment course. That dual enrollment course gives our students Santa Monica College credit while sitting in our seats here at Beverly Hills. And so you can kind of look through and see, you know, obviously the ceramics course, Mr. Lisko's class leads into Mrs. Bronder's course. I'm gonna jump into something that's pretty new to a lot of us in the room. Uh, Mr. Margot was one of the board members that was here, and I think Miss President Marcus, when uh we moved forward with a financial literacy requirement for BHUSD. And again, we are one of the few in LA County and only one within this region right here that offers a business pathway with a requirement attached to give those students that exposure. So when you look, we started all as early as seventh grade. Students have the opportunity to start in seventh grade and take business courses all the way through up until either junior year or up until their senior year. And what's exciting about this is what we're hoping to finish, and again, that capstone course is an entrepreneurial capstone. We want to be able to bring in community members like a, almost a junior shark tape. Let the students create businesses, and they get some community backing and some funding behind that, and let it, let them rip. Hopefully makes a couple million and I can retire early. But audio production, here's another one. Again, we're able to extend that right into the middle school, sixth through twelfth grade. Students have the opportunity for that music industry, and again, I want to highlight another thing. On on December eighth, also at four PM, there'll be a ribbon-cutting ceremony upstairs for the new music careers, um, Music Industry Center upstairs in the C building. So that's gonna be really exciting if, I'll mark you guys' calendars. Um, obviously, our Physical Education Athletics Program I mentioned earlier. Uh, thank you, you know, Tim Ellis and Kelly Park and Todd Radonsky and all the middle school folks for getting our athletics program up and running, and again, the point behind that is being able to feed in and build our high school programs. Uh, there's only a couple more, uh, and I'll jump into another topic, but our Computer Science STEM. I think this is important to uh applaud everyone up here and in the room and all of our teachers on. Uh, again, a couple of years ago, they, we jumped into the whole STEM realm in the middle school, and it kind of sat there in isolation for a little bit. And then as we started to work through over the last couple of years and through reconfiguration, we were able to tighten our belt a little bit at the middle school to expand it at the high school. And since then, in twenty twenty, if you recall, we received the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. Why is that important? Because we are now being able to recruit and get students into our coding courses at the high school, and if you look at the enrollment in those courses, predominantly female. Um, and so that's a huge win for us in BHUSD, and I applaud the teachers, Jennifer Goldsby and for those efforts. Another new one, uh, that we've been building over the past couple of years, and it's exciting as well, and is dual-enrolled. Uh, so mean again, students, when they hit that um second to third-year course, will get early college credit, uh, transcripted college credit while sitting here, uh, is our Fashion Pathway. And so that too is a new facility that's on the second floor, again, in Building C, so when you're here for the Music Industry Center, you can look to the right and see the Fashion Center as well, and we're still working on some of the logistics within there, but there's industry sewing machines to, uh, we have a FIDM instructor actually instructing our students. Uh, Culinary Arts, something very specific to Beverly Hills. Again, another pathway that we have that no one else has supported within our region, which is excellent. You know, Sheffield Lees uh runs one of our Gate programs, and again, creating that feeder opportunity for our students. Our Leadership, uh, we have one sitting right here, a product all the way, I, you know, I think even Elradao Student Council up through. Um, so it was great to now be able to formalize the middle school ASB program, um, all the way up to be able to partner with our high school program uh and even bleeding into our uh Elementary Student Council, so that's great work. Uh, and then Medical Science Academy. One of the things I'd like to highlight here that's a super success for our students is on October twenty eighth will be our first, uh, we created a partnership with Cedar Sinai about three years ago, and that partnership is for the simulation labs, and what does that mean? The doctors, any new doctor, any intern doctor at Cedars goes through an extensive training facility that's housed at Cedar Sinai, and it's real, well, as real life, as it can be, uh, simulation labs from childbirth to choking to an earthquake, and we have access. So three years ago, we were able to build that partnership with them, uh, where our students were going on Early Release Thursdays to be able to learn alongside their their learning doctors and taught by their instructors. And so we got about halfway through the eight sessions and then the world ended. But now that we're back, we are able to, uh, the first one will be the introduction to the OR, and it'll be airway obstruction, um, and so they'll lead into, um, uh, obviously choking and all those types of things, but it's uh introduction to the surgery rooms, so it's pretty exciting. Uh, Multimedia Pathway, uh, Journalism, Your Book, I'm gonna kind of fly through a little bit. So that leads me up to the Gate program, and so a lot of questions have been around, what are we offering for our gifted and talented students? And why are you selecting those programs? Again, there is a method to the madness. When we just flipped through both the BVMS and BHHS pathways, you're gonna see those pathway titles reflected in these elementary opportunities. So we are offering a ceramics course for those fine, those fine art students that want to be able to go into Lisko or Bronder's course. We now are providing them access and exposure early on because it's something that we can't offer them during the school day in the elementary arena. Addition, Spanish. We're offering a Spanish course now after school that's being hosted at Beverly Vista. Um, to audio production, the kid, the elementary kids are actually coming to the high school campus and and going, they're actually been in the Media Industry Center before we have. Uh, then those are the, some of the kids out there. To even the Star Education, these are those Wednesday mornings that we bring to you and ask you guys for approval. The forensic science, we offer the forensic science in the middle school, and that course then lends itself to the Medical Science Academy at the high school. Again, that pathway creation from all the way elementary all the way up, and you can see even at the middle school, the broadcast journalism, the KBEV. Uh, one of our KBEV extraordinaires was in the program last year, and he now is here filming us. Uh, investment, uh, moneymakers, again, around that financial literacy and creating the opportunity to get kids involved in our business pathway to culinary arts. So a couple more, uh, what I want to do is just kind of revisit, we talked about our CAS scores again. And so what I wanted to do is, instead of going through each of the grade bands and each of the levels, I wanted to just create a slide to be able to capture all that information into one. So you can see on the left-hand side the ELA scores, the right-hand side the math scores. Again, this is our percentage that exceeded, meted or nearly met state standards. We are trying to identify any educational gaps. That's important for us to be able to make sure that we are addressing and handling them as soon as we possibly can, right? We don't want to wait any longer. We're already nearing the end of first quarter. So you can see that compared to the state percentages. So when we were here, this is also the science one, so you'll, again, you'll see that fifth, eighth and twelfth, that's only three grade bands we test in science. But when we were here last, or meaning we, Ed Services Department, we had discussed the following items. We were talking about how are we gonna provide support through our strategic plan through Goals One and Two. And one of the ways is obviously our SST meetings, which happen every Wednesday. That's the opportunity, there are student success teams where um the adults in the student's life get together and be able to discuss strategies to support. But we talked about intervention programs, TK through twelfth grade. Those are in place. Those kids are already receiving support. You guys have been an instrumental piece on the Air Tutors contract. We already have so many students that are receiving support from them and success. Both English learners, so meaning some of those students may ha- uh, be uh first generation to the American school system, so helping the parents understand and getting engaged, but also just tutoring in multiple subjects for students that are struggling in multiple areas. Based off uh council recommendation, uh, our summer programming was a success. Uh, we were able to, any student that had failed two consecutive semesters of any of our content area, math, English, science, social studies, we were able to place them into a summer intervention program. And so all of those were successes, and so we thank you as Board of Education for approving those expenditures on behalf of Ed Services. Again, uh, one other really great highlight that I just kind of want to recall the community and ourselves to uh around the hard work that our staff and everybody has done is just our advanced placement scores. So again, I took all those slides and kind of combined them just so you can really get a quick glance. But if you look at the third slide on that, that's where the rubber meets the road. This is one of the things that we would like to do and continue to do is expand and grow our advanced placement program. Why is this important? Right now, we have seventeen of our twenty-three advanced placement courses. The average score is a three-plus, meaning that kids are earning early college credit from taking these courses and/or if it's an Ivy League school, they may get admitted. They, Ivy League schools do not provide uh credit for advanced placement, but you also can't get into an Ivy League without above a three. but you also can't get into an Ivy League without above a three on your advanced placement. So the important piece though is 17 of our 23 classes, that average score is a three. And that's all the students combined score. In addition, I want to draw attention of there's 36 advanced placement courses out there for high school students. We currently offer 23. We just offered two new ones this year. Again, the advanced placement for computer science and the A P Human Geography, which was a pilot a year ago, but only seven students. And now we have over 100 students enrolled. We want to continue to chip away at that list. Where else can we find opportunities? Because if I'm a student in the hallways, I may not identify or want one of those 23. But which ones on that list can we be able to implement and get into our school to provide students more opportunity? Along those lines of that early college credit, something that we're working on on reinstituting for second semester is our West L A partnership. So not only did we highlight a little bit of the dual enrollment courses that we offer, meaning kids get college credit while they're sitting in our seats. They have the opportunity through advanced placement. But for those that might remember, pre COVID, we offered West L A college courses here at B H H S on college campus on our campus for what we called the freshman 15, meaning the 15 college credits for the fall, meaning introduction to communication, a humanities course. And those students get college credit from West L A. It's taught by West L A college professors. And we will be relaunching that in the spring and it'll be hosted in the room right next to us on Tuesday evening so we can see that happening in lifetime. Dr. Bergy had already talked about the P S A T success. Again, 85% of our juniors sat for the exam. Our first year being able to offer the P S A T, we were talking like 60% participation rate. Over the years, we have literally climbed in percentage. And the more like Dr. Bergy had stated, we get our students to practice these exams and have exposure, less test anxiety and higher scores. And 92% of our freshmen, that's overwhelmingly, that's an overwhelming response. But out of that comes this, right? So right now you can see we have nine commended students. That means that they're in the top 50,000 students in the United States. That's amazing work out of 1.5 million. They're in the top 50,000. And then we have four that are semifinalists, which means they're in the top 16,000 out of that 1.5 million high school students. And they are still in the running. They're still finishing the application to possibly be a finalist. So that's pretty exciting work. And then last but not, well, no, it's actually not last but always they keep lying to you like that. Is the, I wanted to highlight the college board. So some of the people in the community do have questions around, why did we test 11th and ninth grade students? Again, in all honesty, it's unlimited resources. We only have so many staff. It takes up a lot of people to be able to pull off just doing the P S A T for the juniors, much less including the freshmen. In the spring, when the juniors take the S A T school day, the 10th graders then will be taking the P S A T 10. And people will say, well, why did you do the ninth graders before the 10th graders? The ninth graders are new. The P S A, it's an eight, nine exam, meaning there's it straddles between eighth and ninth grade. A lot of schools will use that exam for a placement exam into high school. So that's why it's a good measure when we receive these scores is really where is our freshmen sitting at? In the fall, right away. Then the sophomores actually take the P S A T 10. So everything is based off the 10th grade nation standards, not just the California standards. And so that's really what we want to try to get as much 10th grade curriculum under their belt before they sit for that exam on March 3rd. Funding sources and plans. Again, people always ask, how can you afford to do this? Where's this money coming from? And where did you see it or did you guys just create this on your own? And I just kind of wanted to run through. I think the Board of Education and the community, we've had a lot of different things come through. We've had the extended opportunities plan in April. The L cap we talked about and a lot of that's reflected in the next couple of plans. Tonight, we have the S R three expenditure plan, which is the next item on the agenda. What you will see coming up, which is new and hasn't been brought to the board in quite some time is the educators effectiveness grant. That'll be brought to you November 1st for a public hearing and then approval in December. And then we turn right around with the mid-year L cap, which is a brand new thing to all of us. So that's something none of us have seen in the state. It's brand new, is approved over the summer. They said that they haven't given us enough things to do. They're going to give us more. And so we hope to see the template soon and then we'll be able to bring that to you guys for approval. And it'll be based off of our June 2021 adoption. So again, a thank you to the Board of Education, teachers or instructional assistants, administration site principals, happy principal month. And district and ed services staff for holding this ship right. And I'm open for any questions on the pathways or test scores or anything like that.
Wow. Nonstop, really great. Dr. Stern.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seaman. I think that, you know, given the tough two years or 18 months or so that we've had with the pandemic, we really do unfortunately lose sight at the amazing gems that we have for education at our school. And I've always known that this is an amazing place for all the educational opportunities. And, you know, we have been dealing with a crisis really for the last two years. And sometimes it's really hard to see that we have a lot of great resources. And this wonderful presentation really, really shows us the evidence, you know, that if you look at the state average for the, I think it was the CASP you showed us, which is a, you know, very prominent test here in California. And we, we consistently, you know, outperform. But also that with the, all of the students who take the A P, if I understood your numbers correctly, the average number is, you know, three slash four. And that means that not only do we attract some of the most talented academically talented students, but they succeed and they're able to succeed only because of the amazing support of the teachers who are behind them as well as the parents who work with us in partnership. I think that what also impressed me is just the amazing gamut of different disciplines that you were able to show us, not only for the A P classes, which of course is very important as we try to accumulate more, but also just the wide array of pathways. So whether you are a child who's very interested in or a teenager who's very interested in robotics or science, or you're someone who's interested in fashion, or you're someone who's interested in in strictly just academic and in reading and literature. You know, you, the school really offers it all. And I think my hope is that as we get some perspective and we hopefully say goodbye to this pandemic at some time, that we can return and dust ourselves off to the amazing things that are going on that really exist. And I absolutely think put us on a par with a lot of the private school offerings, if not better in a lot of ways. So I'm, I'm very pleased and thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
President Marcus, I thank you for the private school. I forgot to just show you one thing and I, I think it's important. I started off the whole presentation with alluding to the fact that we wanted to do a side by side comparison because I think it's important when people say, oh, well, they offer this or they don't. And what we did was we really dug in and compared our B H U S D pathways to Brentwood, Crossroads, Harvard, Westlake and Marlboro. And you'll see the gray checkboxes are where those schools actually offer those programs. And so you'll see in our middle school predominantly, like I stated, a lot of those aren't offered within some of the institutions. Again, Crossroads doesn't have a middle school. But so you're going to want to look at Brentwood, Harvard, Westlake and Marlboro. But then when I get over to even the high school, one of the great things is we are always compared to, well, they offer this. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to not only fill in those boxes or find areas that they didn't have. And so this is a really great comparison. And I didn't know how to put that into a slide format, then I'd been up here all night. So I just wanted to show you that this exists and it's live and we will get that information out to people somehow, some way.
Mr. Margot.
Thank you. So Dustin, I have just a couple of quick questions. For the CASP statistic that you gave us, you had said that our percentage is based on nearly met, met or exceeded. So that's three of the four basically categories of scores. Does the state use the same metrics in their percentage? Is that nearly met, met, met or? So what I'd be curious to see is what it was, what it would look like if it was just met and exceeded. If there's any way to get that number, we don't have to do a whole presentation for it, but I'm just interested in seeing what that looks like. Because it's really met or exceeded that, that it used to be kind of the metric that everybody used. They didn't really put nearly met into that percentage. Maybe it's because of the pandemic. I don't know, but we cannot be the district that we want to be and continue to kind of push that bar down. We have to keep it up. So I would like to see that number. You said about the A Ps. Do all of, you said there's 36 available. Do the schools, because you correlated this into our rankings at the beginning of this presentation, do the schools that are higher ranked offer all 36?
Close to.
Close to.
Yep. So to become like an A P school is kind of the goal. So like people say there's I B schools, there's also A P schools.
Okay.
And so it's kind of that 30 mark threshold. So if you're getting up into the 30 range, you start to become identified as like one of those college board schools using the S A T school day, those types of things are only in our benefit.
So we've taken a lot of wonderful steps in that direction and changing that part of our profile. I look forward to seeing how we can carve out the talent and the time to continue improving that program. For the A P itself, I, I think people should be forewarned about A Ps. They're a wonderful experience, but not all colleges take them. And they happen to be in my now six years of having kids in college, they're taking them less and less. So I think it would be very important for people to have a general idea of where your kids want to go. And, and, you know, you don't have to have it narrowed down, but make a list and start checking what A P classes they do accept. Because it's good to know before your senior year that the three years you spent taking A P classes are going to mean nothing. You know, and that, well, we don't accept that, we don't accept that. So it's just something that's individual to most colleges. And it's not something we can assume, oh, my kid will take that A P class and they will automatically get college credit for it. That is just not the case. And I think that should be a preface to anybody taking an A P class. Understand, this doesn't guarantee you automatic college credit, like you said with the Ivy League schools. Doesn't guarantee you college credit. It gets you in the door, doesn't guarantee you the credit. So that's something that everybody should be aware of. And as far as the new P S A Ts, nines and tens and all that, what is our, what does our school do to prepare, if anything, those kids for that practice exam? And are there resources if we're not beside educating our kids, obviously, but they're, but it's test taking skills? So are there avenues and outside resources that students can be directed to if they want to take advantage of, of preparing for that?
Yes. So for the eight, nine, we do not prepare because eighth grade really was the preparation for the sit for the exam. And we really want to use it as a benchmark of like, where's the educational deficits in that eight, nine score? So then that way we have two years to work on it before they sit for the P S A T in the 11th grade exam and then the S A T. For us too, over the summer, if you recall, we offered three free boot camps. So one of the things that we want to fight against a little bit is a lot of our community believes that they have to hire a private college counselor. They have to hire private tutoring services. And we believe as administration, I think, board too, is that that should be something that we're providing. So we use like Mr. Hangler was our English teacher for the boot camps. And Casey Raleigh, Ms. Barnison, our college counselor, it led the college application conversation. So it was about a three hour block over a week where they did an hour math, E L A and college prep for this, for the S A T. We hope to extend that during second semester after school. You'll see communication and marketing to lead up to the S A T for that as well. Outside of the fact that our English and our math department at the high school do have these conversations around the data points of like, what can we do within the classroom to ensure students have exposure to it before the exam? One thing about the advanced placement too, I'm sorry, Mr. Margot, is to any questions in the community or anywhere. College Board has a direct website where they will say exactly what the college course will translate at whatever university.
Great.
Yes. So there's a, it's, it's the A P calculator. It'll say Arizona State University, it'll translate as a comms 100, English 101. So an example of what you, I just want to provide an example is A P English Literature versus A P English Language. We offer language first as a junior course because if students score high a five, a lot of schools will only allow one English credit to be waived because most of us only took two English credits going into college, a 101, a 102, a 201, a 202. They only waive one of those. And usually it's the English language one that they all accept that credit for. That's why you'll see a decreased number from English language to English literature at the high school level nationwide.
No, that's, that's, that's a great thing to announce for the community and understand their resource. I think it's, I think it's terrific for students moving in. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the pathways to success. You know, it looking us, when you compared us to the private schools, which is what we want to be compared to by the community, right? We don't, we don't need to recruit, but we want to be the caliber where we are. So we have to ask ourselves, now that we know that we're really holding our own as far as options for students and pathways and honors and A Ps, why then at that point are our students enroll, our Beverly Hills students not enrolling in our schools? That's the question that we need to get to the bottom of and figure out if it's actually something that we can change or if it's just the community. And you can't, for some people, you're not going to, you know, change their mind. They, they always intended to send their kids to private school and they live here because of the police and fire, let's say, as an example. So we have, but we have to continue that quest as we're working on improving ourselves side by side with these, with these institutions to, to be able to answer honestly those questions about when that person, when that resident decides to send their kids to a private school, what made them make that decision? Why not us? Because we offer everything that they offer. Our buildings are getting refreshed and newer and newer and newer. So then, and then as, as that all opens up and the construction finishes, because that is a point, by the way, of why people aren't here. What is it then that makes people make that decision? Thank you.
Mrs. Wells.
Well, thank you for this presentation. I'm so impressed by the comprehensive thought that is put into this in the program that these pathways, you have so many different pathways and so many options for all of our students. And I, I love the thinking behind it. It's, it's clearly been a long time coming and I'm really excited as we move forward and that the middle school has more time to be able to take advantage of these pathways to really see the success of all of the thinking that's gone behind this. And it really, it really does look like you have set everybody up for success. So it's really exciting and as well, following along with the strategic plan. It's just, it's very focused and it, it's, you know, the breadth of it is really wonderful. I would say about for the A P classes or even any of the classes as you continue along the pathway, what's exciting for the students is because they start those pathways earlier and it's their interest and their love of learning, whatever those subjects are as well, that allows them more and more opportunities to continue their passions. So whether it's an A P class at the end of the day or not, what it's providing is opportunities to learn in subject, subject areas that are really where they're passionate about and what they're interested in. And that's such a great thing for us to offer for a school district that there's something for everyone in all of these different areas, whether it's for college credit or not. It still provides you with that higher level of learning. And the only other comment I might make about the A P courses, which you already touched on, is that whether it gets credit or not, it does make students, when they go to apply to schools, look very competitive. And so for them to easily be able to step into A P classes because they've been on a pathway and it's already their interest and they're taking A P classes, it does make them, it sets them up to be very much more competitive when they go to apply to colleges, wherever they may go and regardless of whether those A P classes are, you know, they're giving credit for them. So I think that's another wonderful thing to emphasize with the students that, that they're, it makes them competitive and, and things that they're really passionate about. So I just think it's really wonderful and I really look forward to seeing this program come to fruition over the next few years.
Mr. Raymer.
I've got a solid Mr. Question, sorry. So firstly, I wanted to ask about the distinction between accelerated and honors classes at the middle school level. Because I do remember at the high school, when I was a freshman, I took geometry advanced, to which was the same pace and the same curriculum as the honors class, but without the honors credit. Is that the same with the accelerated at the middle school?
Nope. So if I followed you correctly, one of the things that we. Nope, so uh if I followed you correctly, um one of the things that we we used to do here in BHUSD. Is we used to have a lot of accelerated courses that didn't carry the honors credit. And so basically what we did was we just moved kids very fast. So an example is a lot of our. Uh friends or family may have taken Advanced Geometry as a freshman. So it was an honors level course without the honors level weighted towards the GPA. So when you compared Culver City versus us. Those kids had honors geometry, we had advanced geometry, they had a higher GPA applying to UCLA. And so what we did was we looked at, and I'm gonna, we looked at revamping the curriculum to ensure that we were meeting and holding an honors course. And then adding that honors weighted GPA. So when you look at our middle school, the accelerated piece is exactly that. We're just trying to accelerate the curriculum to see if the kid can move as fast as. The curriculum's moving versus the honors is really leading themselves into. Accelerated would probably go to a pre-algebra or an Algebra One. The honors would go to an honors uh honors advanced algebra, honors algebra one at the eighth grade level or geometry. So eh uh honors is exactly what you think it is. And accelerated is getting them caught up enough through the seventh grade standards. To get them to be able to sit for pre-algebra or Algebra One.
Alright, thank you. Um how many classes can a student at BV take?
Uh they, seven.
Seven, thank you. Um.
And remember they have the rotating schedule, so they can sit six in a day, they pick up the seventh on the second day.
Perfect. Uh how does the honors curriculum in terms of the um core English, math, science? Or English, math, science, social studies uh differ from the regular curriculum? Like are the textbooks different at the middle school or?
No, great question. I get this a lot. So the difference between our honors level and our four content areas versus our regular level. The standards are the same for the state of California. There are no honors level standards in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Through the California Department of Education. What we did was we were able to take those standards and apply critical thinking. So we really focus on the way that students are learning, say, a subject matter and then being able to transfer that knowledge. From what they learned here, which I would have in a regular sixth grade social studies, but can I apply that to a real life example? Like almost like a work-based learning example. Um so it's around the critical thinking behind a lot of classroom debates in those courses. Uh so not as much sit and instruct, a lot of student-led conversations.
Fantastic. Um in terms of the non-academic advanced courses, I know that. Um students are able to test into those academic honors if they believe that they have the ability. But may have not taken the prerequisite honors class. Is that same test into the honors course available for the non-academic? Like uh are sixth graders able to skip art beginning and move into digital or ceramics?
No, and uh great question too is, so that's where we're trying to leave that word advanced. At the non um honors bearing credit courses. So an advanced art class. That's where that word advance should live. That means it's a second level, it's a more of a concentrator course. So you'll see advanced business. So we have an intro to business. Advanced business is where uh you're really taking the intro class and taking it a step further. Um where in uh four content areas, we used to say, you know, Algebra One honor or advanced geometry. Instead that should be an honors, where our CTE courses and elective courses should read advanced. Our content core where you get an honors GPA boost should have the honors. Does that make sense?
Yes, so students are not able to skip.
Get one and move into the other. No, it's in sequins, so they want to take the intro concentrator and then the capstone course and all those.
Fantastic. Um let me continue. Oh, in terms of instrumental music and in um vocal music in general. Is movement to the more advanced ensembles guaranteed now, or is that still an audition-based process? Um or do students who participate in the the beginning ensemble immediately move up to the next level, or is it at the discretion of the the teachers?
It is, it's still an audition-based. So they still have those in the spring and preps for the fall.
Perfect. Um oh, then some of the other classes have the, have the same course listed for all three of the years. Or all four of the years. Does staying in the same course fulfill the pathways? So does per se staying in beginner photography fulfill the pathways? And is there merit to staying within the same course for multiple years?
Nope, you found my Achilles' heel, my friend. So in the pathways booklet, that's one thing. So we want to be open access for our pathways, right? You always want to provide an entry point when a student has a passion and then it may change, they may mature, they may. Uh you know, something shifts uh and they want to enter a new pathway. You want to provide the intro course. Across all four years. However, it looks like they can repeat it, but they can't. Once you take the intro course, you have to then, well, you don't have to. You can choose to move on to the next level, but you can't replace that same course. So that's the one Achilles' heel in that booklet. I can't figure out how to articulate that. Uh we want to be able to provide open access, show it that it's an option each year. But they're really only entering it into one of those years, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh and does the person, taking personal finance at the middle school. Have any like merit in terms of an advanced placement at the high school, or is it just sort of an? An introduction or an increased amount of general knowledge regarding around the subject?
Nope, so uh the middle school programs are built um where two semesters of a middle school course. Equals a semester of a high school course. So I'm gonna use this as an example. Uh in, you'll see in the booklet, Spanish one, uh the semester of high school is a full year, so a full sixth grade year. Spanish one B is a full seventh grade year for the second semester of Spanish one at the high school. Same thing for the elementary or for the middle. So our personal finance course at the high school is a semester long and it fulfills our financial literacy requirement. Middle school students have to take the personal finance course plus the advanced finance course, so a full year. To get the equivalency of our financial literacy requirement on their transcript at BHHS. Does that make sense? So it's a full year middle school equals a semester of high school.
Yep, no, that's fantastic. Um.
But you can see middle schoolers now can knock out a lot of their high school requirements, which gives them more exposure to additional electives and other opportunities. That they may have been tied down to in years past.
The, I have like one or two more. Um under the physical education section. There's both the uh athletics pathway and the the physical education pathway. What is a a physical education elective at the high school that isn't, that doesn't fall under the the athletic or sports team category?
Uh dance. With dance, we actually have it housed, if you look at the performing arts section. So you have uh the dance athletics and then you have your physical education track.
Okay, that makes sense.
And you'll see that reflected in the BBMS booklet as well.
Perfect. And the one other question, this one is is getting kind of tedious. But in regards to choir at the high school. Um I like uh, this is just kind of a formatting thing and I'm not sure if there's any other way around it. But in terms of concert choir is generally the start for students and then they are able to then audition into the higher ensembles. Minus singers, I don't believe is a requirement to then go to madrigals. I believe that it's either. A an optional step in between and it's also more so limited to those with with higher voices. Um so I'm not sure if that is able, if madrigals could be listed on the second year as well. Because students are able to take it, or they are able to take minus singers?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good recommendation. Uh I think by design, it's because it is an audition and madrigals isn't a promise. Um whereas um when you're coming out of the concert choir, minus singers typically would. Take most students, if that makes sense. So that's more of that open access question or answer. Um so those first two entry levels would be those first two courses. Um but I like the suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for putting you on the spot with all those questions, but I appreciate you answering them.
Talk. Thank you.
Wow, thank you very much. Uh Dylan, I mean Dustin, it's a very, very, uh you wore me out. You wore me out. But I have to tell you, I can't uh say much more than what all of my colleagues have asked and said. Because there's so much that they have covered. I would just like to say a a couple of comments to. Uh very often in the public, I'm asked why, what do I think about the high school program and so on and and kids going here and. And I says, you know, you just can't find the volume and the the complete array of classes. That these kids can take if they come to the high school or even going to middle school now with the pathways, which I point out to parents all the time. And I tell them, if your child is, wants to be, go through the academic pathway. There's no better school that they can get into. They'll get everything in the academic pathway. If they're looking to go to a four-year college and go back east or wherever that four-year college happens to be. But they will also get exposure to so much more that will make them ready for life in general, because we have it there. I would like to make a comment about the um college, the AP classes, because when we asked about. Whether the college gives them credit for it or something like that. What popped through my mind is something that both Mrs. Wells picked up on and I also picked up on, and I was writing it down. Sometimes we just take that AP class, it doesn't make, we don't care whether it's gonna get the college credit. It's gonna get us more involved and deeper into the knowledge of that subject itself. So I don't often think that you have to know in advance if that's gonna give you college credit. Because just the advantage of being able to take that class and knowing you're gonna start college with so much more information than you might have otherwise. So that was another thing that went through my mind. And I just have to tell you that it was um, I can only echo most of the remarks of everybody. And um I just have to say thank you again for this great report. Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Now I think we have what's called the SR three expenditure plan and I think that's.
Like to make a motion?
I don't know why you should sit down, you're uh, you're up again.
President Marcus, can I make a motion to approve the SR three expenditure plan?
Okay, yes.
Paul Second.
Who's that? Thank you very much, Dr. Stern. Motion moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Dr. Stern. To approve the SR three expenditure plan, which you're going to explain right now.
Yes, uh um sorry, let me just switch my. Ultimately, uh this is um our expenditure plan that has to be approved, obviously, by the Board of Education. And it'll go to Laco and also the California Department of Education. What it is, is you'll see that I reference in, uh we reference within this plan, the Local Control and Accountability Plan on page one. And Extended Learning Opportunity. A lot of the things that we are addressing in here are aligned with our strategic plan based off of our LCAP. And the um EOL Plan that again was back in April. Um it's around our learning loss and so specifically around how are we supporting students' needs. Uh again, if you remember even in just this presentation, um things like our summer school programming. Um additional staff in the independent study program. Uh I I will have to say for us too, uh Dr. Bruggi, myself, Ms. Chizam, Dr. Horvath. Got to attend the Superintendent's Symposium on Friday. And one of the first questions when I sat down for some of our colleagues is, man, how many kids do you have in your independent study program? And our numbers are so low compared to our surrounding um colleagues that they're almost staffing a full new high school. In that program, Hawthorne USD has close to eight hundred students. Um we have less than a hundred, you know, at the high school level. So it it's crazy in comparison. But that's what the the SR funds are towards. So as you kind of scroll through the plan itself, you'll see. Uh where did we get our feedback? It started all the way back at the strategic plan, right? So you see a lot of our focus groups. How do we create these goals? Why are we moving in this direction? Um as you uh continue to kind of scroll through, it's really around where are we going to use the funding? Twenty percent of the funding has to go directly towards learning loss itself. So you'll see that second tab. And in those ways that we are addressing that learning loss, um as you go towards that is again. Um summer school programs, SAT and college readiness classes, uh Mr. Margot, that alludes to our conversation earlier. Um tutoring services, our Air Tutors program that was approved, I believe at the previous board meeting. To even um our instructional technology staff. So one of the things that uh came out of our board meeting, I think a year ago. Uh was ensuring that like a lot of our educational applications are available to our families and our students over the summer. And so we use our I four coaches to make sure to monitor that and and support our families. So that's what this plan really is about. It's an extension of our LCAP and our EOL Plan that were approved in April and in June.
Okay, thank you. Uh Dr. Stern?
No questions or comments.
Um Mr. Margot.
Yeah, thank you. Um and I may have missed this, so I apologize. Um the the plan doesn't have. I, it doesn't seem to have a timeframe attached. Is it just a dollar amount attached? Is it based on the, on the dollars?
No, I'm glad you asked. It it's three years. So it's a three-year lump sum um that we are trying to stretch over.
Starting this year twenty one or going back a year?
Uh this past summer.
This past summer, so.
Yep, so it's, it was our summer boot camps, our summer school programs are all included in this. Uh and then we hope to replicate those things to address the learning loss moving forward.
So the funds are twenty one through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Correct.
Okay. Um and have have we committed to any programs in this? That are are at risk of getting cutting once the dollars run out in twenty-four?
Uh only the staffing. Um unless the uh Air Tutors is the only tangible item. Uh most of you'll see is staffing. Uh I think we, a lot of us believe in people. Uh you know, lower-class sizes, independent study, those types of things. So as we hope, we start to pull away from this pandemic era. Uh it's, a lot of this will possibly go away. Not the intervention piece, but the staffing piece. Because again, we are um, you know, overstaffed in areas just because of the pandemic.
Right, and that's what I was asking, is that, is that once we hit this point in in twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that wraps itself up and the funding is is spent. Um we're gonna, we might be at risk of cutting programs that have proven successful. Um for intervention reasons, we might need to revisit these programs as a board, as ongoing programs. What I want to, what I want to set ourselves up for for the future is if we start seeing massive success. In some of these funded programs where we know the funding is gonna run out, we're gonna need to look at other resources to fund them. So I would like to get ahead of that sooner than the summer of twenty-four when funding's gone. Um my last question is, um is there a process of amending this plan? Because this plan is a required plan. Um is there a process of amending this plan if the pandemic should shift in either direction that demands an amendment to the plan?
Um I'm gonna answer that finally, oh, I'm forgetting the same word. Um but uh it's a new plan for everybody. And just like our LCAP, so we submitted the LCAP in twenty twenty-one. And then all of a sudden we have a mid-year LCAP, which is brand new. That's kind of our checks and balances, we believe, in cabinet and at kind of the Laco level. Is that mid-year report and then we probably will see an end of the year report. Um so I think that we're gonna have multiple plans over the next two years. Uh some people are asking if, because these are federal funds, if they're. Because of these plans are seeing, you know, they're they're monitoring us more, if that makes sense. Um and and taking a little bit of that local level away through these plans, but through these plans, we can kind of dictate how we use those funds. So I do believe, Noah, that we're, or Mr. Margot, that we're gonna see December, probably June again, December, June, so.
So through the LCAPs, we'll be able to actually amend this plan if needed.
Yep, yep, hundred percent.
I just didn't want to know if we're, if the federal funding is locking us into something for three years. So that's just, that's fine, that answers my questions. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Wells.
Um I, I, is this, is this plan also fluid in that way? So if you get to mid-year and you see, you want to shift some of these funds because one, it may no longer be needed. Or another program is so successful or that you have, it could use more resources because it's successful. Um to help more students, you're, are you able to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Raymer.
Um yeah, on page three, uh I was curious, it it lists the the focus groups that were held. I was curious when those focus groups were held, because I do know that they, that members of those groups were polled for when the strategic plan was made. And for when the LCAP was done. Are these the same?
Yes, yep. So you'll see on page two, um or I, sorry, page uh one. Uh other LE, LE plans referenced in this plan. And that is our uh Local Control and Accountability Plan, the twenty twenty-one. You'll see the EOL Plan and then also our strategic plan from twenty to twenty-three. So the majority of that top half on page three does come from our. does come from our work within our strategic plan and into the LCAP of the '21.
Thank you.
But don't, you're not off the hook, though. I'm sure this mid-year, I'm going to have, I'm going to need an ASB group as well for the middle and high school. So I'll need some support.
I look forward to it.
Any more, Mr. Raymer? No? Okay, thank you so much for that report. I just have one question. I see how you have apportioned it over the three categories that you have there. Have you left room for, in there, for changes that have to be made and so on along the way? Because of what you might see that you're not doing or what you might need to do, is there room in that money for you to re-budget or rethink it?
Yep. This is in collaboration with Mr. Roach's team, Cabinet, Student Services. So yes, we tried to allocate only so much for year one, with still being able to, like, Mrs. Wells had mentioned, make it fluid enough where if we need to hire additional IS staff, independent study staff, we can do that within this year's allocation. And it won't impact year two or year three of that plan.
Is this also used, by the way, for our quarantine teachers, too? Are we using these funds for quarantine?
Yep. Quarantine, independent study, some instructional assistance for lower-group instruction at the elementary levels, tutoring services, summer school programming. So a lot of, a lot of fun stuff. But again, to Mr. Margot's mention, some of that will eventually dissolve. But there will be things like some of the summer school programming where we'll want to continue and find other funding and hopefully be able to support, if we have the data, to support those programs.
Right. Okay, thank you again. Very good. Thank you. Any comments more? Call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. It passes 5-0 with the provisional vote for 6-0.
4-0 provisional vote, 5-0.
Four, five, yeah, 5-0, 4-0. Okay. Moving right along.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
For the approval of the Agreement for Employment of Executive Director of Construction and Facilities?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Dr. Stern. Do we have any comments or any questions? Anybody wants to make any comments?
We love you, Ken.
We sure do. We sure do. Okay, call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. It passes 4-0 with a provisional 5-0 vote. I will make a motion to approve resolution, Resolution 2021-2022-12, authorizing assignments in accordance with the Education Code 44258.7B.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Moved by Mrs. Marcus, seconded by Mr. Margot. Any comments? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Passes 4-0 with a provisional 5-0 vote. Okay.
Can I make a motion to reject claim number 598060?
Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Okay, moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Is there any questions, comments? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes also. So it passes 4-0 with the provisional vote to 5-0. Okay. Okay, moving on to number 14A.
Make a motion for the approval of an agreement with King Office Services to perform moving services from the MNO Department from El Rodeo to the Beverly Hills High School Village.
Okay, second. I'll second the motion. Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Do we have any comments or questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. It passes 4-0 with the provisional vote for 5-0. Okay, 14B. I will move for the approval of Amendment Number Six to the Leaseback Agreement for the El Rodeo Caps Seismic Retrofit and Modernization Project with Pro West Constructors. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Marcus, seconded by Mr. Margot. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. It passes with a 4-0 vote and a provisional one for 5-0.
Make a motion for the ratification of professional services with environmental audit to conduct asbestos lead-based paint survey for the high school venico site.
I'll second.
Who said that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Okay, moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Wells. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question, I think.
Okay, do we have someone in the audience?
Pam is logged on, so...
Okay, go ahead.
Pam, can you hear me? Yep?
I can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask, is this environmental audit survey based on previous plan that we would have had to have in remediating this site? Or is this based on the broken line issue?
It would have been required before we could demolish the site.
Okay, so this was always planned to happen. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. It passes 4-0 with the provisional vote for 5-0. Okay, 14C. I will move for the ratification of a professional services agreement with environment...
We just...
Is that the one we just, I thought it moved the paper?
I can move for the adoption of the Construction and Facilities Department Policies and Procedures Manual.
I would like to amend that to, instead of using the word "adoption", I would like to amend the, well, it hasn't been seconded yet. So I would like to move that we, we take, that we accept the study and we've received it, but not adopted it. I think that I'd like to make sure that, that, because the word "adopt" indicates that we're going to be doing stuff and so on, I would like to move that we have, we received the Construction and Facilities Department's policies and procedures.
I can second.
Well, can we ask, is there a specific language that makes sure we're in compliance, Pam? Because I know this is a compliance issue.
It will be, it would be an audit finding, probably, if we accept rather than adopt.
Does it have to be adopted or approved?
You know, I would ask Mr. Roach to weigh in on this one.
He is.
I am here. I am here. In general, the board will adopt policies rather than accept them. So in that context, it would be a little unusual to accept a policy rather than to adopt the policy.
But it's not, not something that can't be done, right? In other words, I would like to just make a motion that we have received and accept the policy rather than to adopt it at this, that we can...
Right, but according to Pam, it'll be called out in the audit findings if we don't adopt it.
Well, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Go ahead.
I don't believe that we should adopt it at this point in time when we haven't had sufficient time to review this policies and procedures. I'm happy to say that we've received the revised Policy and Procedures Manual. And I understand that from the scent, from the standpoint of an audit, that you don't want the audit, you want to be able to say, based on last year's audit, one, that the budget and the master plan from 2018 has been revised as well as the Policy and Procedures Manual has been revised within the three years. But I don't believe that this is enough time to adopt it, enough time for the board to review this and adopt it. I think there's, you know, a significant amount of information in here that we just received two working days ago. And I understand that you'd like to be able to have during the audit report for them to say that it's been adopted. But I don't think that that's enough of a reason for us to rush to adopt all of the information that is in here, especially given the light, in light of what we know about our budget and our master plan and that there's more for us to consider. So I think it's not time to adopt this Policy and Procedures Manual, especially knowing that it could not be revised again for another three years. So I think two working days is not really giving significant time for review and consideration.
Well, we don't have an accepted motion on the floor yet. So our discussion is going to have to fall back to a motion on the floor.
Well, I would make a motion to, to, that the board has received a revised Policy and Procedures Manual for review and, and future adoption.
I will second that motion.
Colleagues, I'm not going to knowingly in public vote to put something that we will be called out on an audit for, if that's been the advice of, of the people involved in the audits. I, I understand what you're saying. It is a lot to digest. There's actually a couple of spelling or typo errors that I found in Section 9. And I was going to make amendments or figure out how we include those or go back and revisit it because I don't want to sign off on something that, and I'm sure there's more. But I combed it pretty hard and I found a couple that has grammatical errors. So a school district shouldn't have grammatical errors in a document that we adopt. But I certainly don't want to put us out of compliance with an audit on purpose. I think that, first of all, and Pam, you can, you can answer this. If we adopt this and feel the need that changes must be made, can we adopt a new one sooner than three years?
Yes, the language says that we have to review it and update it no less often than every three years.
So we can adopt it. We can adopt it to stay in compliance. And then if the colleagues find things that they want to revisit and look into, we can absolutely exercise that right. Okay.
Well, I disagree with that in the sense of...
You do, with what part?
I disagree with adopting it because we want to be able to say for the audit report that we're adopting it. I mean, the purpose of the audit report really is to review the program for the past year and then provide that information. We just received this. So to, to make the reason that we're going to adopt it simply so that we can have the audit report say that we've adopted it, I think it's to be revised. And, I mean, the language is revised no less than every, no less than every three years. It doesn't have to be adopted by the board at that point in time. It just has to be revised.
What I'm recommending is that if you have concerns about it because you haven't had sufficient time to review it, I was here during the first round, so I reviewed all the red lines over the, over the course of the last few days. And, because we received this on Thursday. And I was able to, you know, make my comments, ask my questions, find the grammatical errors, whatever I needed to do to be prepared to vote on this today. I fully would encourage us to exercise your suggestion and immediately revisit it and see if there are changes that you want to bring and revise it again, and then we can adopt it again. Nothing is going to stop us from doing that, and we stay in compliance.
Well, it's not, it's not about, I, you know, if we had received this earlier, that, that would have been the case to be, to be able to have the time to do that. But I really believe that we just put together a facilities and construction advisory group. And the whole purpose of them is to review things of this nature. This is, this is what we do.
I don't think that's in their bylaws, but I think it's something...
I mean, I can read for you exactly what the Facilities and Construction Committee is for. And it is the mission of the Facilities and Construction Committee, hereafter referred to as the FCC, to inform the public of the district's ability to effectively manage its facilities and construction program by communicating the results of its work to the Board of Education and by educating the public regarding the current and planned construction projects. The Beverly Hills Unified School District's FCC is designed to act as an independent advisory committee to the Board of Education regarding the district's facilities and construction program. The FCC does not have the authority to act on behalf of the district or the Board of Education. The FCC reviews and makes recommendations to the Board of Education regarding current and planned construction projects and suggests measures to overcome potential budget shortfalls or constraints and improve the delivery of new and modernized facilities. Such recommendations are made to ensure the district is maximizing its resources optimally and be able to complete construction projects in a timely and fiscally responsible manner. The FCC receives information and reports from the Facilities Department and the Bond Program Manager. And with this information, may identify projects for in-depth analysis. Members of the FCC should be able to understand hurdles that may interrupt our slow master plan projects and be able to communicate this information to the board. My point is this, this manual, which is very dense with information. I understand that you read the red lines, but there's more than just the red lines in here.
Well, I've read the other things in the past that haven't changed.
Right, but, but not everybody else has all that information. It also includes the updated budget and master plan, both of which have not been updated for three years. And we have a facilities committee that is designed to review this. And we should be using this as, as a board. We should be using our resources that we've set up as these advisory committees. And this should go to them first, so they can review and advise. And then the board should take that information. It should go to the finance committee. Because within the budget and the master plan, it's talking about how we fund our projects and how we, how we finance our projects and, in, within that schedule period of time. This is a three-year plan that we, for policies and procedures that we are of a board, as a board, are going to adopt. So I understand the sense of urgency to, to provide for the audit, auditors. But at the same time, I don't think that's a good enough reason to rush through this when this is what we do as a board.
Okay, rush is...
It's two working days. Thursday night, and this is Tuesday.
Can I make a comment?
Since we get our agendas on Friday and we review them, I, to me, it's, the weekend is working days when you have all of the reading that we have to do. And it's a manual, it's not a plan.
Well, can I, go ahead, Dr. Stern.
It's policies and procedures. And it's also, it's included in here is the, the budget and master plan schedule.
Dr. Stern?
If my understanding is that, you know, upon our feelings that something needs to be changed or edited or revised, that can be done, then to me, it seems that we're dealing with a matter of semantics. And if we just simply say "adopt for tonight", that does not preclude anyone from reviewing the associated materials. It moves us forward with some other items. And it also gives us the opportunity to revise as needed, because you're right, it's very dense. I can appreciate that. But I feel like as a matter of semantics, and if I understand it correctly, that we don't want to cause problems with the, the audit process, that if we could move forward by adopting it with a provisional understanding, that we have the ability to edit as needed.
But if I understand correctly, Pam, the language is not "adopt".
Yeah, we adopt policies.
That the plan needs to be revised and adopted by the board? That's what the language in the audit report is?
The language is actually in the front of the manual. And it says that it is to be reviewed periodically and to be updated no less often than every three years.
But it does not need to be adopted?
These are policies and the procedures that are to be adopted by the Board of Education.
Right, but for the audit report, I think you can say that you've revised it and it's been presented to the board. But we do not have to adopt it at this time. And so I think we should not rush to adopt it. There's a lot of things in here that we're, adopting implies that we are committing to these things that are within this manual.
But we can change it.
We can change it, so we're not committing to it.
We're not committing to anything.
But we will be committing to it today by adopting it.
So we can change it next week.
Certainly, but today we will be adopting it.
Okay, then we will stay in compliance. Okay, then we will stay in compliance and we wouldn't be dinged by the auditors. And we get to change it if we want to.
I don't think it needs to be adopted to be in compliance and.
Well, I, I think that, um, my question is, is that the decisions that are going to be made have to be made against the, the manual if it's adopted. If it's not actually adopted, then some of the decisions, if I'm not mistaken, Pam, cannot be made. Is that correct? If it's not adopted, we can't make the decision? Or can we still make the decision regardless of whether it's adopted or not? Does it have to actually say that it is adopted?
May I just, I'll try to clarify something. This manual guides the work of the facilities and construction department. Our work continues with or without the manual. The manual has been be, been prepared for the benefit of the district to document the processes that we have used to successfully manage the bond program. That's its use. It's not committing the Board of Education to any decisions. It just shows you how we do our work.
I understand that there's more in it, there's more in it than that. And I, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that to, to adopt it at this point in time. I, I believe that it, it deserves and requires, um, more careful review about what is in here. We have a policy and procedures manual that has been the same manual for the past three years since 2018. So I really don't see that there's an urgency in terms of how we operate, that this needs to be adopted tonight. And there, I, I think it's a disservice to, to not take the time, especially given our conversation on Thursday, that we as a board and, and with the use of our, with the, uh, use of our facilities and construction advisory committee and as well as our finance committee, for us to, um, really consider, uh, what these next three years look like.
Well, so right now, there's just a motion on the floor to accept this and not adopt it.
Yes, that's correct. Let's, uh, let's call for the question. And, uh, Mr. Raymer, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Um, while I do think staying in compliance with the audit is extremely important, I'd also say that I don't want to set the precedent of adopting something and then immediately being able to amend it, even though that is something that can happen. I don't think that it's as proper to do so. I think that once something is adopted, it should most likely stay as it is for at least some time and not just be adopted for the sake of adopting. So, uh, for clarification, the motion on the floor is to accept.
To accept the, the, um, the, the, to accept the con- the construction and facilities department policy and procedures manual.
Okay.
Is that your, what is your vote?
Oh, yes, uh, yes.
Okay, Dr. Stern.
You, you're saying accept and not adopt?
Right. That's, the motion is to accept the construction and facilities department mal- policies and procedures manual.
I, I thought that we said that it was that, uh, we have received for review.
Was the word received?
Received for review, the revised policy.
I didn't have for review.
We have to ask Pam Crossharrow what the motion is.
Pam?
Yes, I, well, I think that the motion is that you received the revised, um, you know, construction and facilities department policies and procedures manual.
That's my.
That was the motion, I believe, Pam.
Except, you accept it. You've received the revised manual and accepted.
I believe I said received for review.
Okay, I, I won't receive the revised, but maybe.
Yeah, received the revised for review.
Oh, for review, okay. Received the revised for review. The policies and procedures manual.
Manual.
Well, you, you accept it though. You received, you received.
The revised.
Manual. And you accept it, right?
No.
You're accepting it, you're accepting it?
It was received, the revised manual for review.
I think, I mean, we've received it already. So, you know, the, the manual has been received.
Yeah, I'm not even sure if that's an action.
That, that's what I mean. Like, it, I mean, it's already been, we, we've received this information.
So you're, what you're suggesting is that we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't take action on this?
Uh, no, I mean, my suggestion would be to take action on it. But I'm, and what I'm saying is that, that we've already received it. So if, if, you know, you were talking about using the word, you know, accepting it, um, you know.
Well, we can.
Well, accepting sounds similar to adopt.
What about acknowledging receipt of?
Right.
Would that work? Acknowledging receipt of?
That would work. Acknowledging receipt of the revised policy and procedures manual.
I make a mo- I will amend the motion to acknowledge.
The receipt of.
The receipt of.
The revised policy.
The revised.
Construction and facilities department.
Yeah, construction and facilities department policies and procedures manual. I need someone who I, that, uh, who, who made the second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, uh, we revised and accepted the amended motion to acknowledge the receipt of the revised.
Construction and facilities department.
Facilities department policies procedures manual. Okay, is that what you've got there, Pam?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we'll go through the question again for the, was for clarification, I believe, from, from Ms. Dr. Stern. Okay, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes, in the interest of moving forward from this impasse, yes.
Okay, Mr. Margot?
No.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, so it passes three and one, uh, three, uh, two and one and with the provisional three and one with one abstention by Mr. Margot.
No, it was a no.
I mean, a no by Mr. Margot. Okay. All right, um. By the way, before we go on, I would just like to compliment and give a shout out to the people who prepared this very lengthy and very complete, uh, manual. Uh, Pam Johnson, Shelley Vasquez, Marjorie Sanchez, and Rachel O. For their work in putting this all together over the last, I don't know how many months. Quite a piece of work, and I want to compliment them. Okay.
Can I, President Marcus, can I ask, um, Pam is no longer here. Well, I guess.
She's still there, I think.
Meet Pam or Pamela Johnson?
Pam Johnson.
Johnson.
From this point on, if there are changes or suggestions or my grammatical, you know, teacher hat errors that I found, do I just submit those to the department through the superintendent?
Yes, we've also found some errors that might be.
Okay.
What did you ask? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How do I submit now the changes that I found grammatically throughout the document?
Yeah, it, it would be helpful if you could just, so we have one point person, and then I'll meet with, um, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, we'll do, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, fifteen A is a discussion item. Review of the selection aptitude to proceed to the board interviews, rate the provisional appointment to the, fill the board vacancy. I'd like to make, I'm going to speak to that now a little bit. After our meeting on, um, October nineteenth, as frequently happens, I will go back and review and look at the board meeting again, so that I have a complete or understanding of what was happening. Sometimes because I'm so busy trying to run the meeting, I miss a lot what's going on with my colleagues. So I will very often go back and watch the board meeting again. And so the next morning I got up and I started to watch the board meeting, and I went through it once. And then I thought, wait, there's something wrong here. I don't understand. So I went back again and I looked at it again, and then I thought, uh-uh, this is something did happen. And I went back, and this time I actually tallied the votes. And I found that we had made a clerical error. And so I was waiting if I could reach, I tried to reach Dr. Breggy. I believe that day he was in a, um, deposition, and I, I couldn't, um, contact him for quite a while. But when I finally did, uh, we got into discussion with, uh, um, Mr., with Jabari about how we could, uh, take care of the, the clerical error that was made at that time. So, um, and I would like, um, if there's any other discussion on that. It seems that we had one candidate that we were putting forward for, uh, interviews that had received only one vote. And it does not seem fair that a person that had one vote is going to be going forward with other people that only got one vote. And it's not fair to the people that got two votes, that someone with one vote would be going forward. So we decided to, um, or I brought it to the attention of Dr. Breggy and to Mr. Jabari Willis and with some of their advice about what we could do about it. So that's why I'm bringing this back for the discussion. And, um, I'd like to hear and opine from some of the members of the panel. Um, I think, uh, Dr. Stern, you're first to go tonight.
I, I think, you know, one of the biggest problems here is just that there are a tremendous amount of very good qualified applicants. I mean, I, the original eight we had, I was very happy with. I really thought it gave us a, a really, a good scope of different qualities. However, I can understand that, you know, we are human and perhaps there was a, a miscalculation. I, I can understand that. Um, and therefore personally, I, I can, uh, respect and accept that we now have a, a list of, looks like seven. Uh, again, you know, highly qualified. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
Thank you, yeah. Um, I, I, I agree with Dr. Stern. I think, um, I do want to say though that, uh, Mr. Goldstein, who is the eighth person that was not advanced to the final round. Um, the gentleman not only served on this board for five years, um, but has served this community for 21 years, um, has more experience, um, obviously by default than anybody else, uh, that's applied. And I think as a board, we should be grateful that, um, anybody who has previously sat in this position would step up um, and offer to help us out in a year, in a very tumultuous upcoming year. Um, and I just wanted to acknowledge a hearty thank you for the Honorable Mr. Goldstein Esquire um, for, for putting his hat in the ring and, um, for any inconvenience that the miscalculation causes. Um, you know, I think as a board, we're sorry for the, for the slip up, but we're all human, we make mistakes. But I think the right thing to do is advance the seven cap and, um, candidates to the, uh, to the.
Mrs. Wells?
Well, I, I agree with my colleagues wholeheartedly. Um, I also, um, you know, apologize on behalf of our, of our board as well uh, to Mr. Goldstein for the error that was made. I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Goldstein as well as Mr., as all of the other candidates that have put their name in the hat and, um, filled out applications and are willing to consider being on the board for this short period of time. It's a, it's a huge commitment to make, and I really appreciate all of the people that we, we had that, that were interested in doing that. And then only last thing I could say is that I am happy to know that Mr. Goldstein will be on the facilities and construction advisory committee advising this board with all of the experience that he has. So, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Raymer?
I'd just like to agree with what the other board members, uh, have said and just agree in general that, uh, in the sense of fairness, we should move forward with the seven that received two or more votes.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to amend the list of selected applicants to proceed to the board interviews regarding the provisional appointment to fill the board vacancy. The names of them are Amir Salkin, um, Judy Freed, I'm sorry, Michael Amir Salkin, Judy Friedman, Gabriel Halimi, Bridget Lifson, Judy Manichieri, Robert Myers, and Aaron, Dr. Aaron Reitman.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Margot, for the second. Uh, any comments on proceeding? I think we pretty well made them. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. That's four and oh with a provisional vote for five and oh. Okay, so now we've got to try to make some headway on going forward with this process. This is a discussion item. Uh, interview your ideas and what you would like to do regarding going forward with possible dates and so on and so forth. Uh, and start with, uh, Dr. Stern.
I think perhaps one of the, um, the best metrics for who would be a good fit is coming up with, um, a reasonable set of questions that we, I guess, would propose to all members during the interview. So it seems to me that that would be the first pass, is to create that. And I, logistically, I'm not sure, uh, if, if that should be done maybe on a shared Google document. Um, I, I don't know. Um, it's the first time I've, I've been through this. But it seems to me that, that's a crucial, uh, part. I don't think we need to be too exhaustive. I mean, I think that, you know, maybe five or six questions could, could really help us. Um, I think we all have a good sense of these seven at this time. Um, but, uh, we do have to think carefully about how we would like to, uh, prepare our interview questions. Thanks.
Mr. Margot?
Um, thank you, Dr. Stern. Good point. With that being said, Mr. Willis is on, and I just wanted to ask him what procedures need to be followed in creating the questions as far as, um, what Dr. Stern just alluded to, and.
Good evening, Board. In terms of developing board questions, there's a couple of different routes. Uh, individual board members could submit it to Dr. Breggy. He could compile a list. Uh, myself and Dr. Breggy could provide, uh, board members some template and example questions to review. And board members could then highlight which questions they would like to be a part. So, uh, we've got a couple of different avenues, uh, the board can give direction on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Jabari. Um, that being said, then I think I would, um, then submit questions to Dr. Breggy. Have the board set a date right now to have our questions submitted. Am I mine or done already? So I'm ready, uh, Michael, for that. But, um, we can submit our questions by a certain day, so he can prepare them and get back to us. And if there's any duplicate questions, which I'm sure there will be, they can nullify each other and, um, reduce the number of questions. I think the other thing we need to talk about tonight, remember, colleagues, we're going to probably have to make a decision on this. And Jabari, please chime in if I'm wrong. The November ninth regular scheduled meeting is when we're going to have to make the decision. Because it has to be done before our next regular scheduled meeting, and it has to be done in a regular scheduled meeting, is my understanding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so basically that gives us next week to run the interview process. And then we can deliberate and make a decision at the meeting on the ninth. So we're kind of, it's, it's fortunately, we don't have a lot to decide on this because it's been kind of decided for us. So, um, we would ha- hold the interviews next week. Um, and I would like to ask my colleagues, since we're interviewing one person at a time and the county allows us, that we can hold the interviews in the boardroom with the, with the person, um, present at their appointed time. Um, I think it's very important to have them in front of us for something this important. I don't think it should be on Zoom, um, and it's, um, and they can, however they need to film it, um, for the community, um, since it is open.
Mm-hmm, and they'll just need to have a COVID test?
Yes.
But, uh, we can accommodate visitors.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's, I think that's really important to do this face to face. This is way too important of a position to, to just do it over Zoom. Um, so with that, so my suggestions as they stand is submit the questions to Dr. Breggy by a certain day this week. Maybe, um, by Thursday afternoon. Um, and then we can decide as a board on our schedules, what times we can set up the interviews and how long the interview should be.
That's what I'm thinking.
Uh, my thought is between thirty and sixty minutes for each candidate.
How much?
Thirty to sixty, somewhere in there to each candidate. I think that's sufficient time. Um, I, I can't, I don't want to be, we have to, we have to give them all the same.
Mr. Margot, if, if I may?
Yes.
I want to make sure I'm, I'm clear, um, as, as it relates to a meeting. You had referred to a regular meeting. In terms of interviewing, you do not have to interview candidates at a regular meeting.
No, just.
You wanted to have a special after the night for the interviews. You could do that.
Right, but then, but then when would we decide, when would we actually make the decision? Doesn't that have to be at a regular meeting?
It does not.
Okay.
Okay.
So what has to be at a.
It has to be in an open session, obviously.
Oh, it just has to be open? It doesn't have to be a regular scheduled open? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
I, I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry, I, I, I thought about what you said, and I wanted to make sure it was clear. It has to be a, in an open session, but it can be at a special meeting.
Doesn't have to be on a, a regular meeting.
Right, it doesn't. So we can schedule it on our own, uh, time and work with everybody. Right, it doesn't. So, we can schedule it on our own time and work with everybody, all the candidates, to make sure we get.
Well, we need to make sure that we free up our time because, you know, we do have to get this done.
Right, right. But what Jabari just said is that I think he just bought us another week. So, that's a good thing.
I know.
Well, if I'm understanding, what you're suggesting though is we would spend one day interviewing the candidates.
Or break it into two days. We can't assume everybody's going to be available at the same slot on the same day. So, we're going to have to, we're going to have to have a method of putting a bunch of options out there that the. Is Jabari, is the superintendent's office allowed to communicate with the candidates? Or does this still have to be board communication only with the candidates?
In terms of scheduling, I don't, I don't see there being any. Conflict there for just scheduling purposes.
Okay.
So, Dr. Breggy's office can be in contact with them. To do that, I, I just want to remind you, deadline will be Friday, November 19th to make a decision. So, you don't have to do anything on a weekend.
Right. So, I think that gives us two weeks to set up the interviews and an extra week to reconvene and decide.
My suggestion would be that we spend two days scheduling interviews.
I think you're right.
As, and do them consecutively, so we don't have too much time spaced out.
I think you're right. That's what I would do.
The other suggestion I would make is that we limit the interviews to 30 minutes.
Yes, agree.
It feels like 60 minutes is much too long.
Okay.
No, I have a problem with.
I would say no more than 30 minutes.
Okay.
I, I agree with you. It's really important, but, I mean, here's the thing. We could, we're agreeing to interview four one day, three another day. I just would, I, I'll let the other board members.
What did you say, Mary?
Voice what they think about the timing. I think it should be no more than 30 minutes for the.
I'm thinking 30 minutes. That was the amount of time that I had. I'm, I'm thinking though, that if we meet them and we can do them all perhaps in one, we may want to narrow it down and have a second interview after that. I, that might be a possibility where we would like to really revisit a couple of the candidates after seeing seven.
We can certainly discuss that after the seven interviews, and then we can reconvene. I think you're right.
Well, but we need, then we need to make sure that we're doing this early enough to do this, so that we have time to do the second round.
Yeah, which is why I would recommend early next week to start this.
I would agree with that. And then my other.
That's why I think 30 minutes on the first interview is perhaps enough. If we're thinking that if we can't agree, or we want to revisit a couple of the candidates that we would really like to have, we can call them back.
Do you want to set a date, I mean, as well, so if we do the interviews two consecutive days and based on when the candidates are available? And then if we only do one round, then we would have another date set for deliberation and voting. Is that correct?
Yeah, but if we cut, if we cut the interviews to 30 minutes, I think we can do it in one day.
I was, I was going to say we could do them in one day.
It's three and a half hours. Yeah, three and a half hours.
So, why don't we plan to do it on one day?
I was thinking Monday, next week, Monday.
Well, you have to see who's available. I mean.
My pardon?
We should have a couple of dates because they, the interviewees may not all be available on Monday.
May I also say something, Mrs. Marcus?
Yeah.
May I ask that questions be due Monday, and then the interviews be held on Wednesday? Because I, I'm, this is somewhat personal, but I'm in the middle of college applications and such, and don't have the most time.
I'm not available Wednesday, but we can, we can discuss dates, but I know Dr. Stern has an issue.
No, just for submitting your questions.
Would we be able to submit questions by Monday rather than Friday?
Than Friday.
Wait, wait, wait. What's your concern, Eli?
I would like some more time to come up with questions and to submit them to Dr. Breggy. Would we be able to set that deadline for submitting questions for the initial interview round to Monday instead of Friday?
Well, it would be a matter of whether, if we were planning to meet next Monday, whether Dr. Breggy could assimilate all the questions and get them together at that point. That would be the issue there. We would need to have them so we could assimilate them and put them together. And if you did it by Monday, we, that we were going to plan, I'm hoping we can do the interviews on Monday.
Well, I have a problem. Tuesday is really the, at this point, the only day that I am free for long periods of time.
Wait, wait, wait. When?
Tuesdays is the only day I am free for long stretches of time, for more than, you know, two hours.
So, you're saying next Tuesday evening then? You're, you're free next Tuesday?
I'm free every Tuesday.
Okay.
So, one, one thing we just have to keep in mind, because this is going to be live, is using the help and support of KBEV to be able to provide the live support. And so, it's going to be difficult and it might be impactful to student schedules if we're starting earlier than 3:30.
Well, I mean, we carve out Tuesday afternoons on for a meeting, so I think that's fine. And if we did a, if we did a Tuesday at four and ran it for three and a half hours, that's been the normal length of a regular meeting day anyway.
Sure. I'm just, yeah, just saying.
And we have to be able to, we have to also have all of those candidates. If they, for some reason, have a scheduling conflict for Tuesday, then we may have to do the second round the following Tuesday, unless there's another day that the four of us can convene. But according to Dr. Stern, right now, there's not for the moment. So, this whole process seems to be defining itself.
Yeah, I mean, I'm free in the evenings. I'm also very Zoom happy, so if that is. But I know we want to do things in person, but, you know, should I, if there's some sort of problem and everyone, including the candidates, has to be a non-Tuesday, then by Zoom, I could make it work.
Are you available though? But you're available in person on Tuesdays, correct?
Yes, I am. The real full Mandy Stern.
Yeah, okay. Live in person. Well, I, I personally, if we do it next Tuesday, and we can get all the candidates in, I don't know whether your evenings, how, how full your evenings, we might be able to do, if we have two or three, two candidates that we decided on, we could probably bring them back on an evening and do a, something with them. I don't know how your evenings are.
I, I'm fine. Tuesday, I am.
Tuesday, you can do it all. In other words, Tuesday, you've got all day. But we, that, that's not the, the issue. The issue is the follow-up, if we need to have a follow-up.
Okay. Right, well, so then another, another evening.
An evening, but we, maybe we'll only bring in two people.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll make it work.
What do you think about that, Noah?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that we won't need a follow-up, but if we do, that works for me. I'm okay. I know the process needs to unfold in the next three weeks, so I'm aware of my scheduling. And every day but next Wednesday, I have open, so to work around.
Work around next Wednesday for you, but.
Yeah, I can't do next Wednesday. I could do, I could start Tuesday if we had to get together. Another, like on Thursday or Friday, if we actually, they had to. And once, I, I like to say that I don't want to have to. I like to just get the interviews done. I don't want to drag people back. The other thing we all have to be aware of is people may have conflicts with the dates we pick. So, we have to give them a chance. We can't just say you show up that one day or you're out. So, we have to give them all a chance to be.
Well, hopefully, they're listening right now, and they're learning that we're doing Tuesday.
They're going through their book or racing whatever they had.
They're writing down, and we'll give them options and try to work around it.
Cancel dinner at Fogata Chow next Tuesday. Got it, thanks. Okay, so, so I, I think for now, we have questions into Dr. Breggy by Friday.
By Friday. Is that better for you, Eli?
I think he needs time to assimilate the questions, and I think three days is plenty of time to write the questions. I mean, if we're having a 30-minute interview, how many questions are we all asking?
That's right.
Yeah, it would, it would help, like Friday, end of the day.
Friday, end of the day, okay.
And then Tuesday, we reach out. We sometimes set it late afternoon, evening for the time, and we reach out to the candidates and see how we can schedule it. Because some candidates may be flexible earlier in that time slot, some later. So, we'll just kind of say if we can work it within that time slot.
Can I make a suggestion? I think we should probably go for like 40-minute segments to give us time after, if there's anything we would like to discuss very quickly after each candidate, just to keep it fresh in our minds, things that may, we may think about. So, I was thinking maybe 30 to 40 minute, 40 minutes as opposed to 30. What do you think about that?
I, I was more leaning towards deliberating at another point in time, not, not.
Okay, so we're going to deliberate at another point in time.
And we should deliberate, because then we could take all the information with us. We can re-watch the video. We can have all of these options to prepare ourselves for the deliberation. Because when you start at one candidate and then you go three hours, you're not, you know.
Well, let me ask a question. If we do it in the district office, the boardroom, can they do setup of filming for that too, Dr. Breggy? So that if we want to see the video or do anything like that after the fact?
So, we, we have done that in the past. It's, it's difficult to, you know, the magic happens here as far as getting really good shots and, you know, in the best.
Is this room, is this room available on Tuesdays?
We could do it here. I just wanted it in person.
Yeah.
And this was on campus, so I didn't know if that changed.
No, I'm just answering the question about the boardroom.
Would it be better to do in the EDC instead? Since that is a larger room and would provide more space in front for a candidate to sit?
It's one person.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's also true.
I would recommend here. This is where they're set up.
This is the easiest for KBEV. That's fine with me.
It is. This, we've, we've tried to make the other rooms.
They're all sitting in the back booth. Yay.
Right.
Yeah, we have a podium, yeah.
We have a podium for the candidates.
Oh, I think they should be seated. We should set up a table and a chair.
We can come up with, using this setting, we can come up with, you know, something that looks good for, you know, the community, but also that's really workable for an interview setting. I'm happy to work on that with Mr. Carey.
Also, I know, Rochelle, you, you want to have an option for a second round of interviews, but I would. Sorry, there was feedback. I would suggest, because the videos, the interviews are filmed, and you can go back and you can watch, that to the extent that we try and do it in the first round, I think that would be ideal. One round of interviews, and then we, and then we pick our date for deliberating.
Exactly.
I don't do, I didn't hear you. What did?
I suggest we do one round of interviews, and then we pick the date for deliberating. And before we deliberate, if there's some reason that we feel that we needed to go back or.
Well, well.
Well, when will we have a time to decide if we need?
Actually, I'm going to rephrase that.
We have to deliberate.
I think we need to do one round and then deliberate and vote.
You want to deliberate that evening?
No, and we should pick another day. One day is just to have the interview, and another day is to deliberate and vote.
So, we can do it the Thursday night. I mean, if we're, if we're interviewing on Tuesday, you're not available Wednesday, Noah, you said. Amanda, are you all right for a Thursday night?
Absolutely.
Mary?
Thursday night, I am. I'm not available on Friday, so you know.
You're not available?
I'm not available that Friday.
That, I'm just talking about Thursday.
Thursday, yes.
Okay, so that I can check my.
What I'm just trying to clarify for all of us is the process. So, we are suggesting that we're going to spend one day and interview each of the candidates.
Right.
Ideally on Tuesday. And then following that, we will set up another, another study session or a special meeting for us to deliberate and vote.
Or deliberate and have another interview.
Maybe have a candidate that we already agree on, or else just have to.
Well, how would we decide? We're going to deliberate and then say, well, we want to go back and interview two other people? We'd have to vote.
We may come down to two people, and we may decide we need to see them again, or we don't. I, I, Mary, I'm inclined to just be able to vote, but I want to give the board the option.
Right. I think that gets muddy. I think we should plan to interview all seven on one day.
Right.
And we should set a date following that that works for everybody, where we plan to deliberate and vote.
Then colleagues, let me suggest this, because we're all available Thursday night. In case any candidate can't make Tuesday, now we have it as a hold, okay?
For those candidates that are not available.
The candidates, so we can do, we can pick up any candidates that couldn't make Tuesday, and then have your deliberation if you want.
Well, hopefully, we don't, hopefully, we will have. I, I don't particularly think that's a good plan, simply because if a candidate can't. The problem is that the candidate who can't come on Tuesday has the advantage of hearing all the questions.
Right. I believe we should, we should try and get on one day.
To have every candidate interviewed at the same day.
On the same day.
That's a good plan.
And as well, I don't think it's fair for the candidates that would come right before deliberating. So, I, I think it's better if we just are, keep it clean.
You're, you're right, and I realize that if they're going to do this job, they have to be available Tuesday, so.
That's a good point.
That's, that's.
So, Tuesday, let's shoot for Tuesday as the.
I, I think.
And then if, if not, we'll work on another date, but agree that the, we'll find a date where we can interview all candidates on one day, and then we'll set up another date that is to deliberate and vote.
And, and we don't.
And should something, should we not be successful, then I, I really don't think we should. I think it's opening up a Pandora's box by saying we're going to go back and interview.
I tend to agree with you on that.
I think we should be really clear now, so that we don't get into any muddy waters later.
Well, let's, let's do this, because we only have to do the next step in the process and deliberate and discuss that. We can, what we've talked about tonight is submitting questions and holding a single interview day with around a 30-minute interview for each candidate. That, that is what we're responsible for. After that, I believe then we can discuss when we want to set the deliberation date, and we don't have to do that today.
Right. That's fine, but that we.
Well, no, but I think, I think we should set that now, because I think it should be on our calendar, what we're planning.
But.
I, I don't think I'm making myself clear.
I'm worried that we, if we, if we set it now, then we're going to change it. We might have to change it. So, we should get the interviews done first and set that date, at least, because I'm hearing direction to do Tuesday, and if we can't do Tuesday, get another day. So, if we get another day, then that day.
Right now, hold time off. We've already agreed that Tuesday will be good.
Right, but somebody.
If it works for the candidates.
If it works for the candidates, we said.
If it doesn't, we'll work, we'll find another day.
If half your candidates can't do Tuesday.
You know what? I, I, I don't think you're going to, if you're going to do it that way, you may wind up with never finding a day for the candidates. They have to make themselves.
I understand, but we have our Tuesdays open.
Right.
Other candidates may not, at this point, have next Tuesday open. They may have the following Tuesdays for the rest of time. I don't know. We're not talking to them, so I don't know. So, I just, we have to give staff the ability to be flexible and say, hey, look, we reached out to seven of them. Three of them can make a Tuesday, four of them can't. They have prior obligations, but they can make it any other day. Are we not going to?
And then you go to the other day, and you've got the other ones that can't come, so you wind up with that situation.
Well, we don't know that yet.
I'm saying, you're, I'm saying, let's give them Tuesday.
Yes.
If they want to be on the board and they've written the applications, I have to tell you, they will make themselves available.
Okay, what I'm trying to get clarif, get agreement on is that we are all agreeing that we are going to aim to have all candidates interview on the same day.
Yes.
Yes.
And that whatever date that is that works, we will find. And that we also agree now that following that, we will get together next to deliberate and vote. And that that would be the end of the round with these candidates. If we are not successful there, we may have time where we can get other candidates, or hopefully, we will be successful. But I do not think it's wise to go back and say, we're going to go back and interview two other people again. I just, I think that is a, I think that is a really bad procedure.
There's three of us that agree with you right now.
Okay.
So, you're saying you want to make sure that you're, we're going to try.
Interviews, and then it's a deliberation and vote, and that is the end of it. If we need to.
So, we, we're going to have to make a, we're going to have to come to an agreement at that meeting then?
That's the goal, is that we have consensus.
You want to do it that way?
We're not deliberating the same day as the interviews.
No.
Right.
We interview one day, and then we deliberate.
No, that, I, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm, I'm fine.
Two more steps to this process, and we are agreeing on what those steps are. So, we're not going to get to after one and say, oh, let's, you know, change this. I, I think it's bad practice. I think we really need to agree now how this next, these next two steps look. So, we will find a date where all candidates can interview on the same day. And right now, we're shooting for Tuesday. And we will then pick a date after where we will get together and deliberate and vote.
Our deliberation date is not a problem, Mary. It's not our, that isn't our.
I'm only talking about the procedure.
If we get the interviews done next week, we can always deliberate at our meeting on the 9th.
I'm not, that's not the, that one doesn't bother me at all.
It's only the procedure.
I'm worried more about getting all seven candidates on one day.
Yeah.
And that bothers me more than anything, and I think we need to shoot for next Tuesday. And let's hope that they can work their schedules out.
Okay.
Because that's, according to Amanda, Amanda's day is Tuesday.
Right, but you know, if there's some, you know, extenuating circumstance where someone's going out of town or whatever, I mean, this is, you know, relatively short notice, you know, I can be flexible in the sense that if I have to be the one who's Zooming on another day, although it's not preferable for me, if I have to be that person, I can. Another option is that if a, an interview is recorded, you know, which it will be, and I'm able to review that and give my, you know, my feedback. I, I don't want to be the person who, you know, stops the whole process. I'm trying.
Well, I, I'm not worried about, I mean, it wasn't you. I'm, I'm thinking that the candidates, I'm being very honest. They want to run for the school.
Well, right, but a week from now or two weeks from now, there's people who have, you know, they've gone out of town, and they're having a procedure. I mean, I can just imagine all, you know.
Well, I understand.
Well, we, I can offer to just, you know, just get that availability from each person, because it may be just a certain time, and some people may be more flexible than others. So, certainly try for Tuesday. I just want to get a start time from everyone.
Give them several different times during the day, several different.
You had mentioned, well, 4 o'clock for KBEV. What time is the best for KBEV?
I would say 4 o'clock would be ideal.
Okay.
So, starting next week, possibly, we have 4 o'clock, 4:30. I would go give, give times in between. I would go give, give times in between. I mean, you can't, you know, I would say four, say four o'clock, four thirty five, fourth forty-five would be the next one, five ten. And so you leave a little bit of flexibility in the between.
Yep.
Yeah, people are a little bit late coming in or they run over, that's fine. So let me do this because we have procedural thing to take care of. Um, we have to make a motion on this right now and approve it. So I'm going to make a motion, um, to set the board interview process for the provisional appointment to fill the board vacancy as next Tuesday, um, we will interview all the candidates with a forty-minute window for each candidate. Following that meeting, we will set a meeting to deliberate and vote.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and it will be held here in the Churney.
Providing you can make those arrangements, right, Dr. Breggy?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll do that first thing tomorrow morning.
Just add one suggestion. Can we stick to the thirty minutes, but it's really forty? Like in other words, we have ten for that give or take, but we calling it thirty? Because if we stay at forty, then we're going to go right up to forty minutes and then.
No, no, we're going to be three thirty, uh, four to four thirty, but the next one will come in at twenty minutes to five.
We're giving.
If you like a shrink, you know, where you get the five minutes.
They only have a half an hour, basically.
Giving ourselves a responsible cushion for, you know, people, people may need a minute to park and walk. People may need, you know, we just have to be.
No, I, I got this area covered.
Good, we don't have to micromanage this. Thank you, Michael. Okay, I think we've talked this one out.
All right, uh, do we have a second on that motion?
Yeah, Mary seconded.
Mary seconded, all right, but moved in by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mary Wells to, uh, the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the question, Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Wells.
Dr. Stern, yes.
I mean, Dr. Stern. Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, it passes with a res four and O, uh, and a provisional of five. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one one, continuing authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to AB three six one. Do I have a motion second?
I'll second.
Who said that?
Mary.
Mary, okay, Mrs. Wells seconded, Mrs. Marcus made the motion. Uh, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, how long is this good for? I can't find any date on the resolution about the extension on this.
So typically it's, we're doing it, it's month by month.
It is month to month.
And, and that could, um, that could certainly change with upcoming legislation.
Okay, so is this now for?
It'll be for November.
For November, okay.
Okay, uh, called for the question, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, it passes with a four and, four and O and a provisional five and O count. Okay, time for communications from the board members. Uh, Dr. Stern?
Start with Eli or?
No, I, I, I'll come to Eli.
Okay, cause he's supposed to go first.
Thank you.
I don't have any comments at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot.
I'm glad we got to talk about education tonight, thank you, Dustin. Um, it's been a long time and it reminds me of why I'm doing this. Um, and I still think we have ways to go, but the improvements that I think we've made in a lot of areas, um, for our schools is, is very noticeable. And the events of the past week at Horseman and Hawthorne and the high school, um, have really showed a strong sense of community for our district that we was squandered during the pandemic, not for any fault of our own. Um, and that our community can come out and be stronger together again is a good sign. Um, hopefully a good sign for things to come. Um, thank you, thank you, Dustin, for your presentation. Thank you to the schools for working very hard to recognize the importance of spirit in academic success. They, it's, it's an element of our schools that is, people don't think about, but when you have something worth fighting for and supporting,